I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the clerk's office is using a new software program, so you'll notice some minor modifications and differences to the agenda this evening. There are a variety of supplemental material that has been provided tonight. One is two emails reference a legal opinion that Mr. Councilmember Gierba requested. I distributed a flyer about the German dinner this Friday evening. What else do we have? Do we have a site plan for Arbor Lane as well as a rendering of the Wood Creek Scenic Trail? And I believe Ms. Bennett, excuse me, passed out a copy of our brochure promoting, clarifying, and providing context for our November 6 ballot proposal, which she'll be referencing during the discussion portion of the agenda. So, excuse me. Members present this evening are myself, Mayor Morrow, councilmembers Gierba, Seo, McClellan, Mitchell, Dillon, and Mayor Protam Tar. From city staff, we have city manager Campbell, Clerk Royal, Police Chief Hart, City Superintendent Engineer Rubel, Parks and Rec Director Scruggs, and Treasurer Bennett. At this point, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
Move to submit.
Thank you. Mr. Seo, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McClellan. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences this evening, so we'll proceed to the one presentation tonight, which is from the Washtenaw County Brownfield Authority. And I believe we have Nathan from Washtenaw County here to present. We welcome you. Please come to the podium, and as soon as you're ready, you may take as much time as you would like.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Great to be here tonight. My name is Nathan Vogt. I'm the Brownfield Coordinator for the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. And it's been a while since I've, I think, seen you all, so I'm trying to get the word out about some of the new programs that we've developed over the last year or two, and just a good refresher for everybody on some of the services and incentives that we can provide. And I apologize, the screen is occasionally blinking off, but it's pretty much staying on, so I apologize for that. So, by way of background, we, the County Board of Commissioners, formed a regional Brownfield Authority in 1999, based on the Act 381 of 1996, which enabled Brownfield authorities within the state. Since that time, 23 local units have signed up essentially to be represented by us, and so we have a really efficient way, kind of a regional cooperation model for Brownfield authorities, which is really nice. So, we represent local units like the City of Saline, or Ypsilanti, or Ann Arbor, in developing Brownfield plans, and working with developers, and turning over Brownfield sites. The program has had 15 completed projects. We're really busy right now with six active projects that are either under construction or approved. There were two approved in the City of Saline, but they were not completed. We would love to work with you all on a completed project, of course, and we've helped you in other ways with site assessments, and I'll get into that a little bit. And just a reminder, Act 381 is really intended, and was intended, to level the playing field. So, the sorts of activities that are supported through tax increment financing are the ones that on a greenfield site, you're not going to run into. And so, that's the purpose of the act, and it's been very successful. Michigan was one of the first states to enact it, and the rest of the country followed suit, essentially. And tax increment financing, I think everybody understands this, but I'd like to show, you have before development, you've got the base taxes being paid on a certain site. After development, the increase in tax revenue above the base value is what we use to finance and reimburse for eligible activities, and those base taxes continue to be paid and collected by the taxing jurisdictions. And then, when the Brownfield costs are paid off, all of that increase is realized by all the taxing units. So, the types of incentives that we provide are threefold. I mentioned the TIF, and that's the third item, but we also now provide a wider array of due diligence and environmental assessment services and grants. So, Phase 1, Phase 2, BEAs, due care, planning, et cetera. We can support public or nonprofit sites at 100% through our programs that I'll talk about, and private sites, 50% of the costs. And then, we have grants and loans for actual cleanup and response activities as well. And then, again, the Brownfield plans include eligible activities that are financed through tax increment financing, and that's the primary tool that we use. So, this program is new. This is a local environmental assessment grant program in the last year, year and a half. It's limited in funding overall. We're using our own administrative fees that we now have sufficient levels of to sort of be able to create this program. And if you have a public or a nonprofit-owned site, we can cover 100% of your cost of your assessments up to 15,000, and then private sites, again, less, up to 10,000. And it's a really simple process through staff, through myself, and you go to the Brownfield Authority for approval, and it's pretty flexible. And then, this is through EPA funding, through the Downriver Community Conference, which you all have used in the past, and this is slightly more paperwork, but really simple as well, and that will come through our office as well. And the amounts are a little bit different, but you get the idea. And then, again, also through the Downriver Community Conference, actual grants and loans for cleanup activities, and that's also through the EPA. Funding right now is currently limited through that program. And then, this, again, is another local program that we've only recently been able to establish because this is from funds, tax increment finance funds on our active projects. So, we didn't have many active projects five or seven years ago, and just in the last three years, we've been able to build this fund up. And this is, again, a local program called the Local Brownfield Revolving Fund. We've awarded a couple of different sites so far. We have about 800,000 or 900,000 unobligated at this point, and this is for the cleanup activities. We want to support good redevelopment projects, and it goes right to the cost to clean up. We do need a Brownfield plan, though, to expend these funds, so if we do have a site that you're interested in, we would need to develop a Brownfield plan, and then, TIF can actually help repay some of those funds if we so choose. Not necessarily, though, it could be a grant. And again, the TIF component, the Brownfield plans, this is the most common incentive that we've used. It's the most useful. It can pay for a wide array of environmental activities. And again, we've, most of our 15 completed sites did actually have Brownfield plans and a TIF component with them. And just some examples that you can see that we've used our funding on, this is the LBRF, which is that local revolving fund. The site Water Street in Ypsilanti had some contamination on either side of the border-to-border trail segment. We came in and provided funding for them to clean that up, and they're just wrapping that up now. A student housing site in Ypsilanti, which is stalled at the moment, but we did provide some assessment funding for that site. There's an aerial of it. The federal screw works in Chelsea, which is sort of stalled as well, but we did provide through the DCC some loan funds, some EPA, RLF loan funds, which have come in handy. And of course, we're hopeful that that site will get redeveloped. And then Dexter Wellness is another good example of TIF funding that we've used to help support that site, and you have seen that it's been quite successful. There's another picture of that. This is a site in Ann Arbor near Cary Town. It's a flatiron building with a condo, well, initially two condos, and then combined to one, and then office on the ground floor. This was a former gas station. You can see the excavation there, that there was a strong smell of petroleum when that was excavated. So, this is a classic use of the Brownfield Plan and TIF funding to help support redevelopment of the site, which had sat dormant for 30 years, literally. And here's a good example in Chelsea, the Jiffy Warehouse that they built or rehabbed. A lot of demolition funds here to support the interior demolition, to make a food-safe warehouse, and that has been complete for a couple of years. A good example in Ypsie of a former elementary school. A lot of this was asbestos and lead and demolition interior to support this redevelopment of that school. Arbor Hills is across from Whole Foods on Washtenaw Avenue in Ann Arbor, upscale retail center, which used 5.4 million in TIF to support a whole host of environmental and non-environmental activities. And just to be clear, the Act in core communities, which in Washtenaw County is only Ypsie and Ann Arbor, can support non-environmental activities. In cities like Dexter, Saline, smaller areas, you are not a core community, so you cannot avail yourselves of non-environmental activities. Only environmental-related activities we can support through Brownfield plans. So, the couple of projects that we did approve plans in the City of Saline that were not, of course, completed, the banks of Saline is one, and then, the other one, of course, is the Village Marketplace. And we, of course, stand ready to help the city with these or any other sites that might come ready to be redeveloped. And a couple of assessment funding sites that we provided, the 600 Maple, which I understand is now being developed. We provided some DCC assessment funding for that, and then, this is one that I found that's before my time, 200 North Ann Arbor Street, the Union School, which we provided some funding as well. That's all I had for you today. I wanted to keep it short and sweet, and there's a lot more depth to what we do and the programs we have, but I just wanted to make myself available and be glad to answer any questions about what more we can do for you.
Nathan, thank you. Apologize for the technical difficulties. Can you get an electronic copy of your PowerPoint to the city manager so we can distribute it to city council members?
Yes.
Excellent. And then, and I'm not sure if you had an opportunity before the meeting to speak to our city treasurer, business ambassador, she's nodding her head that you did.
Yeah.
So, she and I, just for council's benefit and for the public's benefit, she and I had a very productive lunch meeting last week with the current owner of 147 Michigan Avenue, that's the former Village Marketplace, who is interested in moving forward. And so, there were some Brownfield issues that came up that we need to double back with her on, but I'm glad that the city treasurer's taking care of that. Thank you. And look forward to cooperating with you on development of that site.
I would be remiss in not mentioning that your city manager has served on the Brownfield Authority for 10 years, and we've really valued his contributions and his input in the local municipal perspective, so I'd want to give credit to Todd where I should here.
Thank you very much. Questions for our guest, Mr. Gierba?
Just interesting, normally I've thought of this as being when you're redeveloping up a site, trying to clean up the contaminated soil and those type of things. You had mentioned that you'd been able to remove asbestos and such from buildings. Is that still a potential for us if we had an older building that we were thinking of having treated that way?
Certain asbestos abatement, lead abatement, and demolition activities are allowed in non-core communities, but it's much more limited. Generally, those are considered non-environmental, so there are limited possibilities there. We can talk about any example you have and see what we can do.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Nathan, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on on tonight's agenda, we come to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments on agenda items? Then we'll proceed to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion, however, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve as submitted.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Tar. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as...
Submitted.
As submitted, excuse me, boy. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move to our one unfinished business item of the evening, which is 18-161, final payment to Weiss Construction. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from the city manager and to approve or not to approve the final payment of Weiss Construction in the amount of $26,790.
To acknowledge and approve.
Thank you. Mr. Seo, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, I'll let Mr. Gierba be the second on that. Mr. Campbell, would you like to comment on your memo? And I know there was some follow-up that was required from when we last discussed this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hopefully, my memo and the attachments are straightforward, but happy to do my best to answer questions, but we did follow up with adding some of the attachments that were not included with staff, with the item last time. So, we again, staff agrees with the attorney's opinion that Weiss is, the outstanding item, obviously, right, is the NOVA filters, and Weiss is not involved with that portion as far as making corrections, so... But having said that, there still are provisions within the original agreement and such, so... And those items are reflected in the attorney's opinion, so we would recommend paying that $26,790 to Weiss Construction.
Very good. Are there questions for the city manager? Ms. Dillon?
I do, I have two questions. It would be on the supporting documentation, there's an email from Mr. Loy. The last sentence says, "The recent gear drive control issue is not an item that can be cited." Do we know what the cause of that is, and is there a failure of that part?
We are still, that item is still being looked into, so we do not have a remedy for that that I'm aware of, so we'll continue to do that, and if, from staff's perspective, we will, you know, we will determine if we believe that it's a NOVA issue or not. If we believe it is, then we would pursue that avenue.
Okay, because they're stating that they do not believe it is their issue. Is they firm in that stance, or, I mean...
Well, as I said, we're still continuing to try and to remedy that, and once we do have a remedy, then, at this point, we don't have, we haven't found the corrective cause, or the cause, I should say, to correct, because the things that we've tried, the remedies we've tried, have not worked. So, we're still trying to determine what best route to take, and then, at that point, once it's resolved, then we can better determine whose responsibility it will be.
Thank you. Last question is, have there been any other issues with the NOVA filters since these documents were drafted?
Yes, the, one of the trunnion wheels, I believe they were the old trunnion wheels, is my understanding. I thought I confirmed that with Mr. Wogowski, our water and wastewater superintendent, but those, my understanding is those wheels have been replaced.
So, then, we are not going to have an October 1st 100-day mark?
Correct.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Ms. Mitchell?
I guess this would be for Mr. Campbell. My original concern in the meeting is that this document from NOVA was included with our payment to Weiss. I guess I, I guess I still didn't understand why they were packaged together. My intention is to, you know, my personal wish is to see that this payment is completed and vote for that tonight, but I guess I'm just concerned that we have this warranty, it's dated. I don't want it implied that we're accepting that warranty at this point with that October date. We've just gotten information from the DAIS that, you know, the date will be moved again. So, do you have any indication that by including that warranty in this package, is there any liability to us in not having the full benefits of that warranty?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, in the, again, it would reflect back on the attorney's opinion as well, as far, they didn't specifically cite being included in the package, but I think, I thought Mr. Swetts mentioned that at the, I don't believe there's a concern having this in the packet as part of the support materials to help explain the entire issue or item.
Additional questions, Mr. Gierba?
Just real quick, can you clarify the drive control? Is that something that was installed separate of the NOVA filter?
That was part of, and I don't know, Mr. Rubel, if you would care to speak, Mr. Rubel from Tetra Tech would be able to be better, more technical than myself.
I confess, I don't have the document that you're referring to, so I may be a little bit out of context, but I explained it briefly last time. There's a control panel for the filter that is separate from the filter, and there's wiring in between the two. NOVA's statement, basically, is I provided the control panel, I provided the filter, I'll warrant those two devices, but the wire in between was part of the construction contract. And so, then Weiss would, the Weiss warranty would cover that. That was their opinion, NOVA's opinion was it was that wire that was damaged, and I believe that's what the plant superintendent is working with electrician to diagnose right now.
So, and so, under the warranty, Weiss is going to end up paying for whatever cost we incur for that wiring? And just all of a sudden, now we're paying them off that we have a problem?
It should be. I will state that I believe their warranty has ended because we accepted their contract in October of 2016, so it's almost two years, and their warranty was for a one-year period.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Subsequent discussion on the motion. Then we'll proceed to votes. It's been properly moved by Seo, seconded by Gierba, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 18-164, community event application change, Oktoberfest. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from Saline Main Street and to approve or not to approve the request to close South Ann Arbor Street starting at 8:00 a.m. on Friday, September 28, 2018.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, Mr. Gierba. Was that seconded by McClellan?
Yep.
Thank you, ma'am. We have some guests from Main Street, the board president, as well as the executive director. Ladies, do you care to make any comment this evening? It's pretty straightforward. Okay? Any questions for the applicants? Ms. Dillon?
An 8:00 a.m. closing of the road, is that going to impede rush hour traffic, service deliveries? That seems awfully early for a Friday. Are we going to have issues with that, Mr. Campbell?
Is this, we did this, did we do this last year?
What happened last year was it was the first year we had, it was the first year that we had, to constantly tent, put up a tent for the, for check-in. The years before, we had used 10-by-10s, and they'd come early in the day to do the bigger tents, and then, the tent that we used kind of extends further out into the, from the parking spots. So, that's why we wanted to have, let them have the ability to put those up earlier in the day. I don't know how early we closed the road last year. I apologize, I don't have that information with me. But our application said two, so that's when we realized that the tent was going to be there, and that only gives us three hours from, for setup, from the time we closed the road until people start showing up for the event. It opens at 5:00. We wanted to expand that, and then, we thought if we did it at 8:00 in the morning, it would accommodate the tent setup as well.
Additional questions? Ms. Mitchell?
Thank you, Your Honor. Ms. Dernin, have you talked to any of the business owners along that block about the earlier time? Have you talked to the cafe or cobblestone?
We have not specifically asked the business owners about it. It was, I guess, it was something that came up at our last meeting, so we just thought we would put through a memo at city council because the event is coming up so quickly, but we can definitely make sure that they're okay with an earlier shutdown time.
Just give them the heads up as a courtesy.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's good. Additional questions? Discussion on the motion. Thank you, Jill. It's been properly moved by Gierba, seconded by McClellan, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 18-165, M.DOT Performance Resolution. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt from Clerk Royal and to approve or not to approve the Michigan Department of Transportation permit and authorize or not authorize the city clerk to sign the permit.
To acknowledge and approve.
And authorize, Mr. Seo?
And authorize.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gierba. Clerk Royal, do you care to comment?
No, if there's any questions.
If there's any questions, the clerk would be happy to entertain your questions. Otherwise, it's pretty self-explanatory. Ms. Dillon, question?
Just quickly, for clarification, the only difference in this document is just including now the chief's name?
Correct.
Is it a replacement from the former chief?
Correct. Thank you.
Additional questions? Discussion on the motion. It's been properly moved by Seo, seconded by Gierba, to acknowledge receipt, to approve and authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 18-166, payment number three to D.N. Higgins for 2017 street contract. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from city engineer superintendent Rubel and to approve or not to approve pay application number three from D.N. Higgins Incorporated in the amount of $153,663.18.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Tar, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Mitchell. Mr. Rubel, do you care to make a brief comment regarding your memo?
The completion of Woodland Drive West was added by city council, and it was completed in the month of August earlier, and was open to traffic, and it represents the last project under the current Higgins contract unless action is taken perhaps at the next meeting if there's another add-on project in the wings.
Well, on that note, I have absolutely no objections to the motions before us. Your support material is very straightforward. I do want to confirm, though, by our next meeting, we had planned to do a resurfacing along South Ann Arbor from Henry to approximately Pleasant Ridge Drive, and I know Mr. Fardis was looking at extending that a bit, but I think that's an important project. It's a stretch of road in town that needs to be done, so if we can get some clarification between you, Mr. Campbell, and Mr. Fardis by our next meeting, I think that would be terrific, because I'm very eager to move forward on that. Questions, Mr. Gierba?
I agree with you, Mayor. The only thing I think we need to make sure is that we fix that drainage problem so that that road doesn't...
Absolutely.
When we do South Ann Arbor Street, to make sure that drainage problem doesn't become an issue or concern again. We did get a claim resolved with the contractor that damaged the light pole on Woodland when that construction was happening. Somebody took out one of those streetlights.
Yeah, I think Jeff handled that. Mr. Campbell might be able to answer that.
Correct, so when they were delivering the mill, the asphalt mill, the lowboy driver, I believe, took that out with the mill on the lowboy. That was, subsequently, that was replaced by DT, and any cost associated would have been billed to the contractor.
Got it, thank you.
Additional questions? Subsequent discussion on the motion. Thank you, Mr. Rubel. Hang tight, though, because you're up next. It's been properly moved by Tar, seconded by Mitchell, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 18-167, odor control project pay request number one. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from city superintendent engineer Rubel and to approve or not to approve pay request number one to E&amp;L Construction Group in the amount of $68,848.80, excuse me, for work performed on odor control project.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you. Mr. Gierba, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. McClellan. Mr. Gary Rubel, are you going to be joined by Mr. Brian Rubel on this one?
If you have questions, we may, yes.
Okay. Please, if you would like to provide a brief statement, we'd appreciate that.
This is the first pay draw from E&amp;L Construction. I put a tag note on the cover letter, a recommendation drafted by the project inspector, which is Tim Hard, very competent, has done all our major project at the wastewater plant, so we have a good person in charge of that project. So, this is for, basically, it's for startup work and some things that were accomplished on installing foundations for improvements at both the pump station on Wilderness Park and the pump station in Beach Court.
Very good. We're all very pleased that we're moving forward on this important quality-of-life project. Are there questions for Mr. Rubel? Start with Councilwoman Mitchell.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Rubel, in the note from Mr. Ard, I was interested to read that the contractor has had some challenges with supplies. Is that correct? And I just wondered, is that impacting the project's progress overall, or are we still on time?
Well, so far, they are within a week of being on schedule, but, you know, time can be made up in certain milestones in place, because at some point, winter or bad weather in fall will slow things down, you can catch up on other things. So, things are, the weather is the culprit, is some of the problem in getting some of the work done, but certainly, they're doing their best. We've gotten a lot of shop joints turned around by Tetra Tech from the vendor suppliers and the contractors, so unless Mr. Brian Rubel has a, wants to give me some more information about the progress, I believe we're still within a week of schedule.
Thank you.
Mr. Rubel, do you, Mr. Brian Rubel, do you care to elaborate?
Not in great detail. Contractors always want to get the equipment earlier from their suppliers, so I think it's just the standard. We'd have liked to have had it two weeks ago, but things and the schedule they presented still showed them completed in the spring as planned, so...
Okay, thank you.
We'll keep an eye on it.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Were there additional questions, Ms. Dillon?
My first question has already been answered. My next question... Uh, my first question has already been answered. Uh, my next question is, what is the timeframe for the pump station and the generator and... Can you remind me of what that is? Are those going to be done near term?
Those start at first. So I imagine whenever the equipment arrives, they, they have the foundations in now.
Right.
So when the equipment arrives, has to be installed. They, uh, also have to arrange for certain power service changeovers from DTE. That was discussed at the last progress meeting. So timing has to be, uh, set up with DTE to do the control panel, uh, power control panel down at the Beach Court pump station. So that, uh, weighs a little bit on, uh, DTE's schedule also.
Do we anticipate them being done before winter?
Uh, those projects should be done before winter. I, I don't anticipate why they wouldn't be.
Maybe done it online?
It's basically install the equipment and get it powered up.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Mr. Gearbaugh?
Just real quick, do we have any more concrete work that needs to be done, or all those foundations, everything poured?
Um, I believe there's some at the wastewater plant itself, and that'd be for the, uh, treatment system, for the air cleaner.
Will that be done this fall yet, or will...
Uh, Brian might be able to answer that, so.
I, just curious because I think that would be one of the delays if it had to be held off.
There is more concrete yet to happen this fall. Uh, they laid out the supports for the duct work, uh, last week. So that, that will occur, if not September, October, before the freezing temperatures get here, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. So no additional questions, any discussion on the motion? Then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by McClellan to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Gary Rubel. Uh, moving on to new business item 18-168, DTE Electric Line Relocation. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from city manager Campell and to approve or not to approve the, first of two payments to DTE in the amount of $103,734 for relocation of electrical lines for lot 18 of Sauk Trail Business Park. Is there a motion? I'll move to acknowledge receipt and to approve. Is there a second? Seconded by CO. Mr. Campell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is, uh, per, uh, one of the requirements within, within the, um, uh, purchase agreement with the city and the developer for the, uh, hotel and, and hardware store. And so this was, um, uh, the, the total cost of, uh, $207,468, the first half, uh, for design, even though, um, early on, they had said that they wanted, they would be billing us prior to, but, uh, they've been working on it at, um, as of last week. The design was 99% complete, um, and so, um, they're hoping, uh, so once, once they receive this, uh, first payment and then I'll be coming back at the next meeting with their, with the subsequent, another 50%. Um, as per, as per the terms of the agreement between the city and DT that they would have to have payment in full before they would actually do the, uh, the physical work of the line relocation. And they're hoping to have, do that, uh, the first part of, uh, October.
Very good. Are there questions for the city manager? Ms. Dillon?
Can you remind me of what this project entails? Where are these lines being moved?
Sure. So currently, they run across the frontage on the, on the, uh, on the south side there of Michigan Ave. Um, that would go from, and that would be going from, so lot 18, 19, 20, so from east to west towards the Oaks. Um, so, per the agreement, so this will go down, actually be relocated between the eastern edge of the, um, uh, hotel. And, uh, the, the office complex there to the east. It'll go down to, um, the, uh, the road right of way and then head west, um, over behind, um, uh, through lot, um, 20A.
So will they be above ground or underground liners?
This is above ground.
These are all above ground, so they're just moving them. Um, was there any provisions, I can't recall, um, of sharing the cost with the other lots? Have we made any assessments to those lots for this cost? Or is the city just incurring it across the board?
Right, so they, so this is only providing, um, electric, this, because the electric for Zippy's, for instance, came from another route. They had, uh, so there was no cost to the city for that, but they, they had another route for, for DT, the DT did to get electricity to, um, Zippy's car wash. So this is, this is simply reload, this is, I mean, this is an aesthetics thing, as my understanding, um, from way back when, when this was agreed upon between the city and, um, and the developer. So those lines weren't in front of the, their buildings, so.
Right.
So, so that...
Lots 19 and 20 also benefit from it, correct?
Uh.
Because there will be no lines in front of those buildings either.
That's correct, but so the, the short answer is no. There, there is, there was not, there was never any discussions to, uh, that I recall, um, uh, to share the, to, to put the, uh, part of the cost onto, uh, the shoulders, if you will, of lots, uh, 19 and potentially the owner of, of 20.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Subsequent discussion on the motion. Proceed to vote then. It's been properly moved by Marl, seconded by CO to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
Nay.
Eyes have it, the motion carries six to one. Uh, we proceed to new business item 18-169, DTE Energy Franchise Agreement Renewal. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from city manager Campell and to approve or, and to approve and adopt or not to approve ordinance number 806 for renewal of DTE Energy Franchise Agreement for a 15-year period.
Move to acknowledge and to approve.
And adopt, Mr. Gearbaugh? Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Tahar. Uh, before I turn it over to Mr. Campell, I do want to recognize in the audience a Celine, city resident and regional representative from DTE, Ms. Molly Lumpert-Koy, who is present and might be able to address any questions or concerns that she may have. Molly, thank you for your time this evening. Appreciate you being here. Mr. Campell, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so this is, uh, the current, if you will, franchise agreement that the city and DT have for them to have their, their electric, uh, lines, uh, equipment in the city's rightaways. Actually expired in July of 18. It was a five-year, uh, franchise agreement. They have since, uh, request, DT requested a 15-year, which is more along with what they're, they're used to, to doing in other communities. And, uh, staff review and, and city attorney's review, uh, would concur with that, that, um, that, uh, that, that would be, our recommendation would be to go with a 15-year renewal as well. So if there's questions, myself or Ms. Lumpert-Koy would be happy, I'm sure, to, to help, to answer.
Questions for either the regional representative from DTE or the city manager? I'll start with Mayor Protem Tahar.
Um, yes, so, uh, aside from the term, are there any other changes in the terms of this agreement from the previous one we've had?
Uh, I don't believe so.
Okay.
Not anything, not anything substant, not anything substantive.
No, I don't believe there's any changes.
Okay, then, just a comment. It seems to me to make sense to have a longer agreement. Particularly since section seven makes it non-exclusive and, and, uh, section nine makes it possible for the city to revoke the agreement at any point if it's necessary, so I will support it.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, Mr. Gearbaugh?
I just want to thank you for your reach out and email and answering my question about ownership of the poles and some of the wiring and stuff. Knowing that it isn't necessarily DTE's ownership of the lines. Their frontier is kind of abandoned and let fall at times, so we'll have to work our way through with that. So I appreciate your response and help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Discussion on the motion. Molly, thanks again. Appreciate your time this evening. We'll proceed to vote then. It's been properly moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Tarz to acknowledge receipt and to approve and to adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 18-170, Arbor Lane Private Street Designation. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from city engineer slash superintendent Rubel and to approve or to, to approve or not to approve Arbor Lane to be developed as a private street.
I'll move to acknowledge receipt of the memo.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Mr. Rubel, the floor is yours if you'd like to go over your report and if you'd like to address for the public record the concern that I raised to you last week. Because on the surface, this seems sort of counterintuitive to have this motion on the agenda before Planning Commission has approved final site plan, but you explained the process to me. But I think that's worth noting for the public record. So the floor is yours.
The, uh, that section of, of the code, the condominium ordinance was written in 2004. And, uh, as it applies to, uh, uh, site condominiums, um, that between the preliminary and the final review, there's a, a paragraph that says that between the preliminary and the final, uh, city council then, uh, makes a confirmation that the project would be designed either as a private or public street. Uh, in this case, the developer, a small three-acre parcel serving only six lots, has chosen to be, it to be a private street, which is certainly common. We have private streets and public streets throughout the city. And so it just has to make a stop here, um, and get councils' recognition that it can be a private street versus public. Then it'll go to Planning Commission for final site plan approval.
Which is Wednesday.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Would you care, would you care to make another comment on the, uh, on your memo?
No, it's, uh, it's not, uh, it's, it's, as, it's outlined by the code that we have to do this step, so.
Okay.
We're just doing that.
Very good. Questions for Mr. Rubel? Ms. Mitchell?
Um, yes, sir. Thank you, your honor. Um, Mr. Rubel, um, I believe I was at one of these planning commission meetings and I, I spoke to the commission about my concern about not having a sidewalk. But I guess first I want to, the size of the street, what are the requirements of the size of the street? Are those different between public and private roads?
No, I mean, basically, you have to have your dimensions for proper lanes and drainages and so forth, so. It's just that designation, because they don't have room for a 66-foot wide right-of-way. It would take up a lot of the developer portion of the property. That's why some small parcels, especially a 3.06 acre parcel, could not dedicate that much for a street and have room left over for a few lots.
And then, um, I seem to remember a case where we had a private street that later became public and there was a concern about plowing. Um, is this something that our plowing machines could handle if this road were ever...
It's, it's designed to street standards, yes.
So it is, okay.
And it's, uh, the rate, the turnaround at the end is designed per the turnaround, uh, requirements for a T, uh, T, uh, yeah, T turnaround for fire apparatus and garbage vehicles.
That allows the, the physics of being able to turn. So then I guess, um, and I do appreciate that, that we had some information about the sidewalk, that we could request, uh, city planning to look more closely at that. Do you recall at the planning level, because they had looked at this before, was there a discussion about the sidewalk?
Well, there may have been at the preliminary. Preliminary basically just, uh, looks at the, the, uh, durability of the project from just a, uh, sort of a, uh, large overview. The detailed review and all specifics of geometry and, and, uh, fine details like plans and profiles and grades are at the final site plan. So.
Oh, okay.
That recommendation about the sidewalk being installed is in the planner's memo.
Okay.
So Mr. Gearbaugh has probably seen that, because he, he, he gets the packet being on the planning commission.
Oh, I see.
So he has, he has that information already, as well as the rest of the commissioners to, to, to discuss the sidewalk, um, detail at the next meeting.
I see. Okay, thank you so much. That's all, your honor.
Thank you. Additional questions, Ms. Dillon?
So I've got a sidewalk question and I'm hoping you can answer it and it doesn't have to wait till planning. Should these homes be occupied by school-aged children? Now, a, there's no sidewalks for kids, so does that mean that a bus would have to go down that street and stop at every driveway?
Well, the bus usually stops at a pre-designated route in a neighborhood where they can attract a number of students. They probably would not drive down this private street. Usually kids travel from two or three blocks to one central point.
But they need sidewalks to do that.
Um, we...
I believe that's the law.
I don't, I don't, I've not seen the law on that, to tell you the truth, but...
Okay, I believe that.
Out in the country, I know there's definitely no sidewalks, so.
And that's why they stop at the beach driveway? Because I do have concern about their lack of sidewalks.
Additional questions? Mr. Gearbaugh?
Um, not so much a question, and try to clarify, um, that was my concern on the preliminary for this, when they were proposing it, that they felt that you could be able to walk in the street where the cars are gonna be occupied to get to the, um, sidewalk on Old Creek, which is not what I support. And there was, again, pushback by the developer in their recent comments in the planning commission agenda. So that's the reason why I requested some clarification from our legal, is to understand, can we place a recommendation or support that should we have a public, allow this public, a private street, that it does include the, um, use of a sidewalk? Because I think, I don't feel comfortable with having that set up that way. And I don't know of any of our other developments where we have allowed that to occur, even though they claim we have. I don't believe that's true from their perspective, and Gary would have to clarify that. I don't believe, I think everything that we've had done from Cas Point, K Point to Curtis Bluff, all of those have internal sidewalks, even, um, Maple. What's the new one? Not Maple Oaks, but the other one, Maple Oaks and...
Maple Cove?
Cove.
Cove, thanks.
That's kept property.
Yeah, I, I did send information to Mr. Campell and he sported on to Mr. Swetts about the past projects. And, uh, those, uh, those were quite large and they, they basically were not site condos or private streets, so. There's, it's not apples and apples here. It's, it's all kinds of different sizes, different shapes, different needs, so. Uh, it has to be, uh, basically like a lot of projects, they're, they look at, they have some of their individual characteristics and needs. So it's on a project-by-project basis, but it's a good point to debate at the planning commission.
Ms. McClellan?
Uh, yeah, just as a, bringing up the sidewalk, Williams Street is a public street, right? And there's not sidewalks all the way down to those houses that go all the way down to...
Part of Williams is public, part's private. Of course, it's very old. And I don't think, uh, either went through the planning commission or city council. So, so there's no hands on that one, you might say, but...
But I'm just, I'm just saying that there's kids that live down there that walk down the street to get to the bus stop.
The only ones that come close to this one would be, um, uh, Glen Lane went through planning commission, city council. It's very short, serves two, two lots, only has a narrow 20-foot street, no sidewalks. And the most recent one is, uh, actually Riston Heights, the, the condominium, uh, project on Henry Street just has a combination street walk, uh, up to down there, but it's just a, that's a...
Like a driveway.
That, that's a lot condo, not a site condo.
Right.
And, uh, it's a private drive and this is short too, although it looks like a, a small residential subdivision, but it's actually a, a site condominium.
Real quick, uh, well, I'm sorry, Mr. Gearbaugh. Ms. McClellan, did you have anything further?
Oh, that was, thank you.
Then let me jump back to Mr. Gearbaugh and then I'll grab, uh, Councilwoman Mitchell before we vote on, uh, the motion to acknowledge receipt.
As you mentioned, that this street will be developed to city standards and everything. Is there anything preventing it from the size that it is right now for them to come forward, like every development we've had in the last 25 years wants us to take on the street as a public street? Is this street capable of being brought back on as a, even the way it's developed?
Well, they have to overcome the hurdle and council would have to allow a waiver for the width of the right-of-way being only 50 feet. But that would be the prerogative of a city council. You'd have to make a call at that time, whether or not you thought you would accept it. But you'd have to give it, it would, it would be less than the 66-foot standard.
But in this case, it would require a waiver where I think Arbor Redum and...
Huntington Woods.
Huntington Woods and the other one, I reckon, all of those had 66-foot streets.
Right, they had the full...
Full seat streets.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Mitchell?
Uh, thank you, your honor. Mr. Rubel, can you remind me, I don't imagine so, but is street parking allowed on that street?
There, uh, it's 30 feet wide, so it's two lanes and one parking.
Okay, so...
So there was parking on the far side, because there's no driveways on the far side. So if there was walking in one of the, uh, if there was walking, it would be on the south side.
I'm so sorry. Can you clarify, when you say the far side, is that next to the church parking lot?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That's, that's the north side.
So there were...
That, that side has no driveways, so it's really good for parking because it doesn't block driveways or impede any traffic movements.
So, but Riston Heights has the same size, but they don't allow street parking, is that correct?
They have, they have no parking there because it's just a wide concrete driveway with, uh, uh, shared walkway, but it's very short. And of course, they also store their, their solid waste containers along one side of the driveway next to our parking lot. They have a, they'll, they'll have a, like a screened-in area on three sides where they have their totes. They have their totes in like a little row, so the garbage truck can pull up and empty each one at, at a, at a time.
I guess the fact that there is street parking just heightens my concern because children are small and they, they can be completely obscured between parked cars and, and walk out without any notice. So I guess I'm interested in hearing my peers' opinion about... without any notice. So I guess I'm interested in hearing my peers' opinion about the sidewalk. I certainly, at the least, would like to ask planning commission to consider it, but I remain very concerned that there's no sidewalk there for pedestrians.
Any additional questions or comments regarding the motion on the floor, which is to acknowledge receipt? Mr. Seal?
I agree with my colleagues, and I've stated publicly before that I think private streets are pro-public policy. The folks who own property there pay the same amount of property tax as anybody else in the city, and as such would probably expect the same kind of amenities, that is, snow plowing and street lighting and so on, that they're not entitled to as a result of having a private street. So I would intend to vote no on this in the final resolution.
Very good. Okay. Let's proceed to vote then on the motion that's on the floor, moved by Gerba, seconded by Dillon, to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. What's your pleasure, folks?
I'll move to make a recommendation for the private street with the condition, as recommended by our attorney, a recommendation to the planning commission that the PC, that they consider a sidewalk as a reasonable requirement for this development.
Let me just write this down, Mr. Gerba. Here's what I have. Be moved by Gerba to approve Arbor Lane to be developed as a private street with the added condition that the developer construct a sidewalk as a reasonable condition. You're good with that?
Yep.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mitchell. Discussion. Mr. Gerba?
One of the reasons why I'm proposing this is that, I mean, the way that the property's going to be developed, if it puts in a full-size street, it won't be developed. And I know there's people that would like to have that happen, but it's not necessarily, I think this is a good development for this piece of property, considering what we're talking about, homes here. But I do want the sidewalk, because I just don't believe in having people walking in a street, whether it's private or not, when there's a number of homes in there and a number of driveways. Somebody's not going to see where they're going, and I don't want to see us be responsible for somebody in the future for a potential accident. The reason that I'm okay with a private street is because it's less than a normal street, and so some council's going to have to make a decision to waive it. And if it doesn't meet city requirements, why would we want to make it a public street if it's 16 feet less than what we normally would accept? So in this situation, it makes sense to make it a private street. And the idea is that, I don't know why in the future we would ever accept this as a public street, because it doesn't make it amenable to our equipment to plow it and so forth, because of the restrictions with parking and everything else on it. This is the best, this is an issue where if somebody wants to develop something like this, it's their cost. It's not, shouldn't be borne on the taxpayers, even if they are paying high taxes. They want to buy into this, they bought into it, they know full ahead what the development is. So I don't have a problem with this private street.
Thank you, Mr. Gerba. A quick comment, and I'm referring to an email that was distributed earlier this evening by the city manager. It's dated today, September 10th, at 2:18 p.m., from Ronald, how do you pronounce Ronald's last name?
Ron Bulgy.
Bulgy. And he says in paragraph, what would that be for, that if city council's not willing to allow the planning commission to have final say on a sidewalk requirement, then the city council should table the matter and give us an opportunity to give more definite advice as to the reasonableness of this requirement. So while I don't disagree with anything that Mr. Gerba said, I would probably vote no on the amended motion and prefer a motion to table further action until this item can be resolved. Ms. Dillon?
Just for clarification, then, will this matter go to planning commission, or will it now be tabled from Wednesday's planning commission?
Well, it's a notice for a public hearing, and we can conduct the public hearing, we can complete the review, but we will leave the sidewalk question to remain. And that would, the site plan would not receive final approval until that was accomplished. So we can, you know, maybe 99% of the plan can be reviewed, but then come back and just hit the sidewalk item to make the final approval on it.
Yeah, I don't know what Mr. Gerba's perspective is. I think, how you stated it, Mr. Rubel, was perfect. I think we can resolve a number of issues on Wednesday. I would not be amenable to approving final site plan, because we don't have the sidewalk issue resolved. So while we can, you know, take care of a number of matters that ought to be, you know, dealt with under the final site plan, my inclination would be to vote to postpone. There is a motion on the floor, however, moved by Gerba, seconded by Mitchell, to approve Arbor Lane as a developed private street with the added condition that the developer construct a sidewalk as a reasonable condition. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The nays have it, and the motion fails. Mr. Gerba, do you want to offer a motion to, let me ask the city manager's opinion, though, on this. If we move, we shouldn't really move to table, we should move to postpone. Would you have clarification by our next meeting, or should we postpone to October 1st?
We could certainly try, we can certainly try to get it, I don't want to say for exactly definitively, but that would be our target, but.
Yeah, I mean, my concern with if I made this discussion, assuming that planning moves forward with a final recommendation on Wednesday, there could be some, and there are some conditions in there that may be questionable. There's a number of conditions where our final site plan will be approved. So moving it to October 1st is kind of assuming that planning is going to approve its final site plan. You know what I mean? It's this kind of cart before the horse type of situation. To get the final site plan, we want planning to review it, but it's going to have a condition on it by council. And if planning doesn't approve it on Wednesday, then it won't be available for.
Well, you know, site plans can be approved with conditions, and one of the conditions would be to provide the sidewalk. And that would address all the problems. So if there's a good recommendation made by planning on Wednesday, and they add the condition as recommended by the planner, that a sidewalk will be installed, then basically that takes away the argument from being, you know.
True, and we can always, we can always postpone another, if it doesn't get approved, we can always postpone the October 1st one.
And we've done that. I mean, as you know, Maple Cove was postponed.
Yeah, I just didn't want to put pressure on to planning as a result of what we're doing.
So what do you think, October 1st is more reasonable?
That would, certainly, we would be sure to have everything squared away.
Okay. Mr. Gerba, do you want to make that motion?
Yeah, move to postpone to October 1st.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tahr. Discussion on that motion. Then proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion is postponed. Thank you all. We move on to New Business Item 18-171, Resolution for Connecting Communities Grant Request. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from Parks and Rec Director Scruggs, and to approve or not to approve the Connecting Communities Grant Resolution as submitted.
Move to acknowledge receipt of the memo.
Moved by Gerba to acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Director Scruggs, the floor is yours.
Thank you. As you may recall, May 16th, we brought to city council, we wanted to be able to apply for Connecting Communities Grant, which is through Washtenaw County. And we had identified the Wood Creek Outlet Trail as our first project that we were going to apply for over the next three years. And they need a, we made the application, the application was turned in at the end of August, but we didn't have a formal resolution. We had our meeting minutes from the city council meeting, saying that they, that you approved us to apply for this grant, and you have, we have support from you. But they actually need a resolution. So they gave us some language for a resolution, and that's what we're here for today.
Are there any questions for Director Scruggs? Mr. Gerba?
Could you kind of explain the whole trail and how that would approach? I'm just not clear on where it goes, and I think the public needs to understand what we're requesting.
So, let me get my map out.
The reason why I'm bringing this up is because we had such a pushback when we were going for the rails to trails. I want to make sure.
So this is not on the railway whatsoever. There are two property owners that are affected, both which have been contacted. This would be a trail from just east of the wastewater treatment plant, which is off of.
Water treatment.
Water treatment plant, sorry, water treatment plant, which is just east of Breckinshire, the homeowners association there. And it would be using the easement that we already have from the evangelical homes of Michigan, along the property there. It's a sewer easement. And then it would kind of follow the wood outlet drain, which is a flowing body of water that would come to the backside of the Wood Creek Condominium Association, and then enter into Mill Pond. So when you go into Mill Pond Park and you drive all the way down into the parking lot, on the right-hand side, you might notice a gate that says, "Do not enter," or something like that. That's where that would come to. So we would be entering from that trail into Mill Pond. So it would have some really nice connections between, like downtown, some of the homeowners associations, Brecken, the Railroad Depot Trail and whatnot, getting into Mill Pond.
And this goes underneath the first trestle that used to be there, or close by?
It would be close by. We're not, we're still working through all the ins and outs of that, but it would be very near that abandoned trestle.
Okay. And Director Scruggs, I apologize that I was unable to attend the meeting that you had on this subject Friday afternoon with DPW Director Fueres and Mr. Rubel, but I need to double back with you, because we did, for council's benefit, we did, I did reach out to the president of the condo association there at Wood Creek. He discussed at their board meeting, they had a number of questions and concerns that I then forwarded to staff, and at some point I'll need to get back with him to address some of their thoughts and concerns.
Right. And that's what we were discussing, trying to come up with the answers and working through all of those questions.
I appreciate that. Additional questions for Director Scruggs? Oh, please, sorry.
Now, we have the easements all in place for all of those, or are we going to have to work on agreement still?
The easement, we have with the evangelical homes. The one that we're working on would be the easement with the Wood Creek Condom Association.
And there isn't one needed for Breckinshire condos? That's?
No.
City, okay.
Anything further, Mr. Gerba?
No.
Thank you, sir. Additional questions? Well, then we can proceed to vote on a motion to acknowledge receipt, moved by Gerba, seconded by Dillon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. How about a motion now to approve or not to approve?
So moved.
Was that to approve, Ms. Mitchell?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Gerba, you'll be the second. Any additional discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Director Scruggs, and we expect to hear more in the not-too-distant future. We move on to the discussion portion of our agenda this evening. First up is commission, committee, and task force reports from council members. None? Okay. How about reports or other announcements? I passed out a flyer regarding our, a German evening with dinner and entertainment this Friday, September 14th, dinner beginning at 7:00 at the Celine American Legion. This benefits the Celine Lindenberg Friendship Committee. If you're interested, please call our former council member, Jim Rock. His number is listed at the bottom of the flyer. It's a lovely evening, $20 per person, reservations only, and seating is limited, and I would note, and perhaps Mr. Seal or Mayor Protem Tahr could provide additional details, but we do expect our German friends to come and visit us in the late spring, early summer of 2019.
Yes, that's true. And I would also add, we have the High School Exchange Group will be coming to Celine on October 10th, and they're staying for three weeks.
Very good. So this is an important fundraiser for the group, so if your schedule permits, I hope you'll attend. Additional reports or announcements? Then, Mr. Campbell, I think in the absence of our wastewater treatment superintendent, are you providing an update this evening?
I am.
Okay. Floor is yours whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we talked about the trunnion wheels failing earlier on one of the filters. Let's see, we received two complaints early last week regarding strong odors of wastewater treatment plant. Staff did check into those, but unfortunately were unable to detect the unusual odors. The, we also talked about the update, and of course, not part of Mr. Rogowski's report, but you may recall, I did send out an update on the odor abatement project on our social media, as well as sent it to Celine Post, and thank you for posting that. And then also the Sun Times to give an update on the project. And then also, the other item, the PFAS testing for the wastewater effluent, as I sent out notified. I don't know, I think that is that on there someplace else, too?
I don't think so.
Okay. So, so the, so the city had both their wastewater effluent discharge, as well as our drinking water source tested for the PFAS, for those chemicals. We are still waiting on the drinking water sample results. We expect those anytime now, but we have not received those. We did receive results of the effluent from the wastewater treatment plant. There were two detects. One was far below the levels through the federal regulations. One did exceed. And so as we were reaching out to the state, they're still in process of determining exactly what should be and shouldn't be, and how we should do things. However, we did offer our own testing program, and so they thought that that was a logical first steps. And so just some more detail on that would be, our next steps would be to perform additional sampling to confirm the results, and attempt to isolate the source or sources of the contamination. The initial sampling plan is to sample if effluent and effluent flow to the wastewater treatment plant, along with the three trunk lines coming into the wastewater treatment plant, which are our east, west, and central belts. Additionally, we will analyze samples from five additional days over a six-week period from the west belt as part of our periodic local limit evaluation required by the DEQ. We were going to have to do that as well, anyway. So we will begin that sampling a little bit later here in September. So probably in the next week or two that we'll do that sampling.
And our wastewater superintendent will be on hand at our next meeting, provide additional context and background.
Yes.
Questions for the city manager? No? Okay. Well, I'm sorry, who had their hand up?
I.
Ms. Dillon?
Have you been receiving odor complaints?
Just the two from last week.
Okay. Because it seems like it's been pretty bad lately again, and I don't know if that was the humidity that was causing that, or if there was something going on. And then there was also that very distinct odor on the east side, out by Rentschler's farm, that was never detected as to what that was?
Correct. So we had, again, we had only received those couple odor complaints, and then two Fridays ago now, we had, I think it was 7:00, 7:30-ish, I think, when you contacted me.
Yeah, I think it was 4:00.
Near, on Michigan Ave, near Rentschler, we did check into that. We even made contact with folks also at Tractor Supply to see if they had smelled odor, and they hadn't. I mean, we left cars to say, hey, if you detect anything, give us a call. So we did a lot of driving around, walking around, checking into things, and we're not able to ever establish any kind of, any issues, at least with our sanitary.
Okay. But did they, was, did other people smell the smell? Did your staff? Because I smelled it. I'll tell you, it was on my way to the football game. It was a Friday night, so it was probably about 6:30 when I contacted you. And then when I was driving home, which was probably 9:30, that smell was still there. And this is in a car with the windows up. So I know I'm not imagining it. I mean, it wasn't as though I was passing through and there was something there. If it was in that window of time, if it was still there. I mean, I can't imagine I was the only person that smelled it.
Yeah, well, I, again, as I responded to your message, when you had contacted me that Friday evening, I believe my response was, so the way it was described by our DPW staff that was on the grounds checking things out, was only, he characterized it as a factory-type. staff that was on the grounds checking things out was, he characterized it as a factory-type odor. And again, that, and I know you responded, what is a factory-type odor? And that's, I know that's a little bit hard to quantify, but regardless, he did not detect any strong sewer-type odors, and he, so he didn't smell, he didn't describe it as a sanitary sewer-type odor. And he, so he did not find anything, as again, as he drove and walked and trying to find that particular type of odor or the source of it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Additional questions? Then, we'll transition to Sock Trail Business Park, Lot 20A. As I stated at the conclusion of a work meeting three weeks ago, and an email that you should have all received last Thursday afternoon, I am looking for consensus on how best to proceed with Lot 20A. I'm going to begin by reading a statement, and then I'm going to transition. I usually go to one of the right or left flank to begin, but I'm actually going to start with Mr. Girba, work my way down to Councilwoman Mitchell, then jump to Mr. Seo, and end with Mayor Protetem Tahr. First, I think it would be helpful to provide some history and some context. So, Lot 20A and the adjacent properties were first purchased by the City of Celine from the Phillips Corporation in the late 1990s. We began aggressively marketing the parcels in 2013 and approved a commercial rezoning in the spring of 2016. Subsequently, we approved purchase agreements with the standalone Ace Hardware, Boutique, Best Western Premier Hotel, and Zippy's Car Wash. These are exciting projects that will grow our tax base, offer additional employment opportunities, and create new amenities for our residents to enjoy. Recently, the city received two formal proposals for the purchase of the one remaining lot, 20A. The first from IHA, the second from GBA Development LLC. Beginning with IHA, I have long stated my belief that this community deserves and this community needs a 24-hour emergency room and/or urgent care facility, as it directly relates to our quality of life and the well-being of our citizens. Moreover, the Celine community would benefit from additional primary care physicians and specialty medical services. It goes without saying, IHA has a wonderful reputation, and I only, and I continue to hear only good things from my friends and neighbors. But as a matter of principle, I believe that frontage along East Michigan Avenue should be reserved for commercial enterprises, especially those that put a strong emphasis on aesthetics and quality service. As such, I strongly favor the proposal from GBA Development LLC. It's worth noting that they are proposing to utilize the entire property, providing the asking price per acre, and not requesting any additional incentives. Furthermore, their contacts with regional and national brands should prove beneficial and will help to attract unique new businesses to our area. I strongly encourage staff and legal counsel to work expeditiously to finalize a sales agreement with GBA Developments LLC, so city council can review and approve said document in the very near future. I would also request that the partners and associates at GBA Development LLC meet with our steering committee again to ensure that we are working in tandem, that we recruit businesses that are likely to succeed without cannibalizing existing enterprises within the city. Also, I remain committed to working with IHA to identify a location in town that would meet their needs. While many options exist, 7181 North Maple Road comes to mind and is currently listed by Swisher Commercial. This location, adjacent to the University of Michigan Professional Building, has significant visibility and may prove synergistic. But again, I will continue to assist IHA as long as they have an interest in our community. One last thing. Our renewed focus on business attraction and retention have produced many tangible gains in recent years, and the City of Celine will continue to extend a hand of support and cooperation to anyone who seeks to invest and create jobs in our area. It cannot be debated. The best way to ensure the community's long-term viability is to have a growing, diversified, and robust local economy. Thanks again to all those who are involved in this initiative, and to all the groups or individuals who expressed interest in these parcels over the past several years. Specifically, I want to thank Mr. Tony Caparisi, our listing agent at Swisher Commercial, for his continued efforts. And now, I'm eager to hear the thoughts and perspectives of my city council colleagues. Mr. Girba?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's not a number of issues that I would add to what you've already indicated. My concern with this property had always been that we had purchased it when I first was on council with the idea of building our tax base for the city to help alleviate the potential impact it was going to hit on residential citizens. But unfortunately, due to changes in the state taxing approach, and also in the way that that property was marketable, we had to come forward and make a change to it. Perhaps we could have done a better design and layout of it and allowed for additional different types of aspects in there, but at this point, because we have multiple uses in there, it makes sense to continue to basically address the issue of commercial in that area to maximize the amount of investment into that property so that it continues to generate tax revenue as we intended. There's debt, there's other things that have to be covered on that property, and they need to be handled. We're getting full price, which is one of the things that I've always wanted on that property, because that property is key and is extremely valuable property. It's not something just to be given away. And the other part of it is that the new, I think, developers will basically develop the entire piece of property, not leaving a portion of it, or requiring us to develop a component of it, and then leasing it back, or however, through an easement, of which I don't want to be investing in it. I want to sell the property and get ourselves out of it. We've already learned from our other sales that the more we try to stick our fingers into it, the longer it takes, or the bigger the mess it becomes. I think in this case, it's pretty straightforward that the developer wants to develop it, wants to move forward with it, and will meet our price. So, I'm moving forward with the commercial development of it. And IHA was in the city once previously before they decided to leave, and potentially, maybe they can find another location, but I don't think it's up to the city to have to solvent that operation at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Girba. Councilwoman McClellan?
Yeah. I think the frontage from the commercial standpoint is the more logical for the city's, from the city's perspective, of the full-price offer, full use of the property. I'm just not really sure that I am interested in having another strip mall. I mean, I know it's a nicer strip mall than, you know, than average, but I'd like to see more details on what specifics are involved, and as far as what retailers specifically. I don't know if we would get that information. I don't know if we're approving that information, but I just, I'm concerned about adding yet another strip mall, and there's one across the street that's half-empty still. And then, I do, I would like to see a medical facility. I don't know that IHA is, that this is the right space for them, being that they're not going to use the full property. But I do see a very big need to have something like IHA in town, knowing the fact that just today, I tried to get an appointment at my doctor's office, and, you know, it's going to be two or three weeks before they, you know, we can get in. I think there's a great need to have a whole community, which includes, you know, not only just restaurants and shops, but, you know, medical facilities and other amenities. So, I guess that's where I'm at.
Very good. Thank you, Councilwoman. Ms. Mitchell?
Thank you, Your Honor. I feel the same as my council members. I was very direct with the IHA folks that I do want their facility here. I think Ms. Dillon referred to it as a destination. I'm not sure why they feel like they need that US-12 frontage. I spent a great deal of time talking to people and business owners. I had people who were concerned about the local flavor of our town, and my answer to that is, you know, we have that downtown, and it would be a different thing if this type of commercial project was proposed for downtown, but this corridor, it fits perfectly. I'm not at all concerned about filling the space. I look at what went up outside of Myers not that long ago, and I believe it's at capacity. I believe that there are people living in proximity or in town who only go to chain restaurants, who only go to Starbucks or a coffee chain, rather than an independent coffee roaster. So, I think this is a good choice for Celine, going with the commercial route. It allows us to offer different amenities, and I sure do want to work with IHA. I'd like to emphasize that. Just not this location and not now.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Mr. Seo?
I agree with my colleagues. GBA is the, one of the two proposals that I most favor, primarily because they intend to develop the entire property and not leave us with a portion that would have the retention pond that we'd be responsible for, for a third entity. So, I too feel like the mayor, that it would be nice to encourage IHA to open a proposed facility somewhere here in town, but not there in that prime location. I think we'd be better served by having GBA there. One of the additional benefits, I think, too, is that GBA proposes completing the circulation through to the Oaks Shopping Center, and that then, I think, provides an exit, an egress on the Michigan Avenue at a traffic light, either over there on Kevlin Drive or off of Woodland Drive, depending on people going either east or west, which they now have the capability to do if GBA develops the flow through to the Oak Shopping Center. So, I prefer the GBA proposal.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Dillon?
Thank you. Most of what I'm going to say has already been said, so I'll keep it very brief. My biggest, there were a couple of issues with the IHA proposal that I was very concerned about them leaving a 6,300-square-foot building in the back, which is a very awkward-sized building and limited use at that point. And so, I did speak with, or ask Mr. Caparisi about what his opinion was to it, and he is recommending, in his professional opinion, that the lot be developed as a whole and not be left with that piece that we would have to then, again, sell off. And as Mr. Seo mentioned, there was the retention pond issue, which is of great concern. I, I think that the current proposal is the best use of that property at this point. I received a lot of feedback from residents, and there were a lot of people that wanted IHA, there were a lot of people that wanted retail businesses. And listening to what they wanted and why they wanted it made me realize that IHA is definitely a need in this community, but it's not best suited in that space. I've always contended that it's a destination. People don't just drive down Michigan Avenue looking for a doctor. If you're going to the doctor, you generally have an appointment, and so, I don't feel as though that was the best use of that piece of road frontage. So, at this time, I would be supporting the GBA project.
Thank you. Mayor Protetem Tahr?
And I will make it unanimous. I also prefer the GBA project chiefly because it is full use of the property and that, the other proposal from IHA, which left that awkward piece that seemed to my non-developer, non-professional eyes as essentially stranded and probably not usable. Just, for me, that was the key for not wanting to pursue the IHA proposal any further. I will say also, the discussion about what kind of businesses might locate in the location from GBA was intriguing and tantalizing. Of course, there were no details, and I appreciated the fact that both groups offered additional information based on questions that we had raised in the work session. I will say, I was a little bit disappointed in the pictures of the completed developments because they were things like KFC sort of standard, not so interesting, not so tantalizing businesses as we had been, had been sort of, I felt, kind of dangled in front of us. So, I would hope that if this project moves forward, that the businesses and enterprises that they, that end up occupying the space will, in fact, be more interesting than the ones we saw pictures of. Thank you.
Very good. Well, I think you have consensus, Mr. Campbell. Do you have any questions?
I don't. As I understand it, consensus is to go with GBA, and we will work with City Attorney's Office, Mr. Caparisi, to develop a draft purchase agreement. My target would be the October 1st meeting. I don't know that we could turn, I think it's too quick to turn around between now and next Monday.
Seems reasonable. And unless, going back to a point I made in my statement about recruiting the right kind of businesses, offering a hand of cooperation, and not cannibalizing existing enterprises in the City of Celine, unless there's objection from the dais, the steering committee consisted of myself, Mayor Protetem Tahr, council member Girba, Mr. Campbell, Mr. Rubel, legal counsel, and then Mr. Caparisi. Mr. Girba, Mayor Protetem Tahr, would you have any problem meeting again with the developer?
No.
Okay. Gentlemen, would you be amenable to that, having an additional discussion?
Absolutely.
Okay. Very good. Well, we appreciate you being here this evening, and obviously, you heard what our consensus is. It's as close to unanimous, or it might be unanimous. So, we will, we will work expeditiously to finalize a sale agreement and get it on the council agenda in the not-too-distant future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. If there's nothing further on the sale of Lot 20A, then we'll proceed. We've got four more discussion items. Chief Hart, you are up with the next two, which is review of sign data information, and then we can maybe transition into the request for a stop sign in Huntington Woods, Phase 1. Do you have some supplementals to hand out there?
Yes.
Yep, we can pass those out.
Thank you.
This is regarding speed data.
So, if I could, I would like to just kind of do, I know there's been a couple different requests from council members to look at speed sign data, some information that I shared on Huntington Woods, and also readdress a stop sign request from Huntington Woods. So, if I can just kind of roll through this presentation.
Can I go through PowerPoint? Absolutely. I'll get out of your way.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's, some of this information will look familiar to a presentation that you had asked me to do several weeks ago. So, just looking back at the timeline, at least in Huntington Woods, we're going back to March 19th, is when we fielded the first request from Ms. LaForte about a stop sign within Huntington Woods at Newcastle and Huntington and Arlington. So, I discussed this with Mr. Fordice. We looked at the manual on uniform traffic control devices, really the best practices for when and where to put traffic control devices throughout our country. We looked at this, we looked at the data. It did not meet the specific criteria for a stop sign. There are several different factors that are within the MUTCD. One of them is talking about 2,000 units per day, so whether it be pedestrians or motor vehicles moving through the intersection. But specifically states within here before, and I've said this to council on a previous occasion, is that yield or stop signs should not be used for speed control. What it generally does is it will pick up, what will happen is people will speed to try to make up for time in between the stop sign and their destination. So, there are several factors within the MUTCD that Mr. Fordice and I agreed did not call for a stop sign at this location. So, that information was shared with Ms. LaForte, who then responded with a request about speed bumps. Mr. Fordice and I decided that it was not in best practice to put those in. Either we have the same issues with speed bumps that you do with stop signs, is that people will generally increase speeds in between the speed bump and their destination. Also creates, there's, especially with Mr. Weiss, who's here today, and we did speak a little bit earlier, a lot of the construction vehicles that are driving through there, embarrassingly so. I was in there on Friday with a couple officers, showing them how to change batteries on the sign, and there was a box truck that was making a delivery at the model home, and it went down to Newcastle, turned around and came by, and kind of hit a little bit of a bump, and we kind of jumped a little bit. a little bit of a bump, and we kind of jumped a little bit just because of the doors and everything that were rattling on the truck itself, and the noise of the truck as it was picking up speed, I'm like, this guy has to be flying. And I look up at the speed sign, and it was doing 20. So the noise that's generated from some of these larger vehicles, too, can also create some issues. And it's not very environmentally friendly to put stop signs in locations where they're really not called for in the MUTCD, because the expectation is, is that we are going to follow the MUTCD guidelines and when and where to put them. But as a pedestrian or another motorist, if you're on Newcastle coming up to Arlington, your expectation is, is that the driver on Arlington is going to stop for the stop sign. And when those signs are placed in areas where they really don't, they're not called for, people tend to roll through them. I'm not justifying bad behavior, but that has just been my experience over 27 years as well, is that when you start placing stop signs to slow vehicles down, we're creating another problem, in that people have other hazardous behavior. So going through the timeline still, I did offer to put the speed signs in there. The mayor and city manager Campell and I met with several residents on May 15th. On May 24th, we put some unmarked vehicles in there with two marked cars as a deterrent in the subdivision. We couldn't pick up anyone other than 22 to 27 on the landscaping crew. Our speeders were predominantly residents at that time. Mid-June, put a speed sign installed on a speed limit sign for vehicles eastbound. This was really a very difficult location to put a speed sign in. On the 20th, the resident was unhappy where the location was placed because it was kind of midpoint right at Newcastle. So we requested a new speed limit sign mid-block between Newcastle and the exit point of the subdivision. But I would also like to point out is, also during that complaint, was that there were construction vehicles that were not stopping completely at the stop sign at Newcastle coming out onto Arlington. So we're already starting to see this behavior bubbling to the surface, whether that was a single-point stop sign or a three-way stop sign, we're still going to see this type of behavior. Against my better judgment, I went out and put a speed sign on the north side of Arlington, catching vehicles coming into, or I'm sorry, heading westbound or eastbound out of the subdivision. Generally not the way that these speed signs are used to collect data, but until we can get a speed sign up on the south side, it was a temporary measure. July 3rd, the speed limit sign did go up mid-block, and the signs were charging at station. I installed the signs on July 6th. Officers continued to provide patrols, including myself, through subdivision. And now the information from Mr. Weiss is that we're dealing with construction vehicles that are entering the subdivision. So we keep kind of moving the problem around the subdivision. So now we have officers that are down there from 7:00 AM, based on sign data that I'll show you in a moment, to about 7:45, so I can get the midnight officers out of the building without overtime, but still provide a deterrent to people coming into the subdivision to work, and also from 5:30 to 6:30 in the evening, based on the sign data. So when I talk about our speed signs, here they are. This is a picture of them. They're made by All Traffic Solutions. They're just over $3,000 apiece. That does include a traffic suite, which allows me to monitor the speed sign data and review the data and run reports from my desktop. It's all sent via the internet. So it's a very costly feature to have. If it's something that we choose to continue after February, we're going to looking at $1,500 annually per sign, so that's $3,000 per sign to be able to manage these signs remotely. The signs were placed in service on February 15th. In order to reduce downtime, and I'll show you that in the chart that's coming up, I ordered four new batteries towards the end of the budget year. We had a little bit of money available, which has cut down on our downtime with the signs. And that's what I was doing on Friday. I took two staff members who had not previously known how to go out and change the batteries, pulled the signs down, replaced the batteries. There was maybe five or 10 minutes in downtime. The total investment for these two signs is $10,192. So some of the cons of the signs is we have spurious readings. So this was one of the speed alerts that I received. We could see a blower, a zero turn, and a gentleman with a weed whacker, a delivery truck on the north side of the road. So this is on Arlington, facing westbound. Newcastle is down just about maybe where the top of the gentleman's head is, maybe over his right shoulder. So this was a spurious reading. We were picking up things such as the weed whacker, or maybe the lawnmower, the engine, whatever it may be. The cameras feature, and the strobe and the flashings, they do generally tend to drain the batteries quickly, but they do offer a great visual when someone is speeding. Cannot issue tickets from the images and the data, and one of the reasons is the spurious readings. Police officers that are certified in the use of radar, and go through the class, we're all taught you have to have an audible tone, has to be a solid tone, and you have to visually look at that vehicle and say, I think that vehicle is doing 37 in a 25 or whatever it may be. And obviously, with the more experience you have, the better you become at that. So we can't write tickets from these speed signs. And it records, as we look at this data, I want you to know, we're only looking at oncoming vehicle data. So imagine a drop of water in a glass, and there's different ways that those waves kind of work out. So the signs are set up to only collect those waves, those radar waves, as they are approaching the sign. They don't catch the ones that are getting wider as they go away. So just kind of keep that in mind as we look at the data. The cons, I think we've seen a lot of vehicles slow down because they give a visual speed indicator. We can either flash the digits, or put a strobe light on, or do both above a certain speed. Provides a basis for resource deployment. We do have officers that are really into looking at the data when the speeding is occurring, what days of the week, and they're going out and deploying in the area, and then they're providing that reinforcement back there through a traffic stop when someone's exceeding the speed limit. And of course, it assists you folks in setting and adjusting speed limits, looking at the 85th percentile speed limit in a particular area. So this is data, now this is average by the hour volumes, so you can look at the averages from Huntington Woods. It's a little bit easier to see up on the screen versus those slides, for sure. So there's not a whole lot of volume on average per hour. And when we look at compliant, that's vehicles that are traveling 25 miles an hour and slower. You have to set thresholds on these. Low is 26 to 34, and I'm not by any means saying that that's a low priority, or a medium, or a high priority. These are just thresholds that have to be set within the system itself. But it gives us a reference point on vehicles that are going through Huntington Woods on Arlington and being recorded. This is part of the same report, and these were all run on the 6th in preparation for the meeting, as I put things together over the weekend. So look at compliance by hour. We still don't know what 6:00 AM is. We have a vehicle that comes, we have a reading that shows up that's high risk, that shows the vehicle's doing 50, 60 miles an hour. I am guessing, because we've never had a picture of it, it's probably someone's sprinkler head. It's just a spurious reading because officers are out there trying to find whoever is speeding through the subdivision. But we just, we are not seeing, we see a lot of compliance, a little bit of low risk, certainly less medium and less high risk within the sub. In the very bottom indicator, the green line is the speed limit. So you can see the 85th percentile speed, for the most part, is below the threshold. That 2 o'clock hour, I'm again going to go with some type of spurious readings because we've never had a picture of any type of a motor vehicle that would trigger that, that speed at that time. So these signs are not perfect. They are, they don't replace, obviously, a police officer running a radar unit and keeping track of speeds within a sub, but I think they give us a pretty good glimpse of what's occurring within the deployed areas. Now this is, I think Mr. Girba had requested this data. What does Huntington Woods data look like versus where else these signs have been deployed? Probably a little bit surprised on the various places that the signs have been deployed. The number of days of data, I think, is very important because when you look at the dates that it was deployed, before we got those spare batteries in, we can have a downtime of two or three days because it takes at least 24 hours to charge these batteries. So that's why we purchased the extra batteries. So if you look at Arlington, as we're catching vehicles exiting the subdivision eastbound, total volume over 61 days in that one direction was 3,867. If you go to the very bottom for compliance, we look at, we're at 83.68% compliant within the subdivision and the speed limit, 35 miles an hour or slower, or I'm sorry, 34 miles an hour or slower, you're getting close to 98%. And I'm not discounting the information that Mr. Weiss is giving whatsoever. I take his emails very seriously. We try to deploy our resources when we can out there, and we'll talk about some of the challenges of our resources and when we're pulled in multiple directions here very shortly. Anyone have any questions off the? So we talked a little bit about the wrong access point for the builders. This is not a police issue. This is something that Pulte has to rectify, and they have to police, so to speak, their own trades folks and their builders, because there is no traffic control order that controls vehicles and which entrance they're supposed to use. Again, we talked about installing the three-way stop signs. Just looking at the MUTCD and speaking with Mr. Fordice, it just does not meet the requirements for a stop sign. Certainly doesn't mean you can't decide to put one there, but I think that there's dangers in that, in going away from best practices, and we may see other areas within the city, you know, residents coming in and saying, we want a stop sign as well. And there's no justification to deny them once we start getting away from the MUTCD. Speed bumps, same thing as far as the speed bumps, unless you were going to put a lot of them in there. And I also worry about emergency vehicles, fire trucks, snowplow trucks, other vehicles that need to get back on an emergency basis once that Phase 3 is complete. You see where we've had contact with construction workers, unmarked vehicles, and I'll show you a picture of our latest vehicle that was put into place today that will be out in many areas of the city enforcing our traffic laws. So here are some of our challenges in dealing with our speeding problem in Huntington Woods, is our peak traffic volumes in Huntington Woods are really the same as they are anywhere else in the city. Last week, we had a young motorist hit another young motorist. They were both on their way to the high school. He was on a moped, she was in a car. I had a car sitting in Huntington Woods trying to address construction traffic coming into work. So it's really, where do we put our two to three resources that are on duty at a given time? We look at, last week was a horrible week for accidents. We had seven accidents, two with significant injuries at our peak times throughout the city. I did share some information, trying to be a little bit more transparent in our data. So I shared where our traffic accidents are occurring, citations, crime data, things like that, on social media last week, on Facebook, so we can kind of see where the accidents are occurring and where we're putting our resources along Michigan Avenue to try to have our largest impact on those accidents. And unfortunately, the same time we're seeing these incidents, we have people speeding in Huntington Woods and other areas throughout the city. Citizens in Torwood, Harris near Clark, Harper between Harris and North Ann Arbor, and Mills near Bennett, they're calling us. They want the speed sign deployed in their neighborhoods as well. And when we go back to look at how many days these signs have been in certain areas, 61 days in Huntington Woods, 72 on West Henry, so we have some pretty big heavy hitters here, and I really need to start rotating these signs in other areas throughout our community, because truly to address the situation that's going on in Huntington Woods, I would need four signs. So two on Arlington, east and west, and two on Huntington, east and west, to really try to deter, at least visually, the speeding that's going on within the subdivision and collect the most accurate data. So there's a lot of challenges here. That's another $10,000, so a $20,000 investment into speed signs. Our opportunities is to continue to monitor and provide periodic patrols. I can tell you there's not a Saline police officer that doesn't know how important Huntington Woods is to myself, to the city council, and our residents, more importantly, that live within Huntington Woods. This is our new squad car that you approved, and the budget last year was just put into service today. It's a slick top, a little bit more discreet. The hubcaps are going to, those center caps will get painted black, and it's a little bit, you know, harder to spot, sitting out throughout the city. And maybe some additional signposts in Huntington Woods, so we can kind of, as we do put the sign back in there, maybe we can look at trying to collect some data on some westbound vehicles pulling into the sub and try to slow them down with some visual cues through the strobes and the flashing speed limit signs. So I'm certainly available for questions, and as we try to work to resolve this issue with Mr. Weiss and others within Huntington Woods.
Very good, chief. Thank you for your presentation. That was very thorough. We'll address questions and concerns that you have regarding a proposed stop sign in Huntington Woods Phase 1, as well as the speed data in its totality. Chief, a couple of questions, and I, the placement of signs in Huntington Woods, at least as of late, I think, has been seen as beneficial by the residents of that neighborhood. And I understand those are useful tools that you want to spread around the city. You and I have talked in the past, and I think as we approach the next budget cycle, if there's some opportunity to allocate additional funds within your budget to purchase these types of technology, I think that, I think that would be wise. I think that would be prudent. You and I also talked this past week, because as I look at the volume of emails that my office receives from residents of Huntington Woods, at least of late, the complaints generally involve construction vehicles during the afternoon hours. And to a certain extent, this is an operational question, and I'll leave it to you, how you deploy your subordinates, but currently, I think you usually have an officer there during the morning hours when construction begins and when children are headed to school. Perhaps there's some value in changing that and deploying an officer or officers in the afternoon. One question for you, because it's somewhat related, in regards to making sure we have enough boots on the front line to do the work that's required on a daily basis. So on the day shift now, Officer Ringe is now the SRO, so we're one short on days. Is that correct, from eight to four?
It was until shift change.
Okay.
Last week. So I pulled the midnight relief officer.
Okay.
Up, because sometimes there's three or four officers working at midnight. Our calls for service predominantly come in during day shift and afternoons.
Right.
So looking at the data, I pulled someone from the midnight shift.
I think that's wise. But my question would be, where are we in the process of posting for that additional position?
So I just completed the job description and wrote the, the, gosh, I'm having a brain freeze here. The job posting this morning before I came to work.
Okay.
I sat down, authored that, sent it off to Elle for her to look at, and it'll be with the city manager's office tomorrow morning for him to review, and then we can get it posted.
Very good. Okay. I'm going to start at the opposite end of the DAIS for questions, begin with Ms. Mitchell and end with council member CEO. Kristin, any questions for the chief?
Yes, Your Honor. So chief, I really do appreciate this data. It would help me. I can't read either the paper or the, look really terrible eyesight. So if there's a way that you could provide us with a copy before the meeting, and I'll upload it and be able to zoom, because I just couldn't read everything I wanted to read. So a couple of things stand out to me. I think it was a very thorough analysis that you did, and I, what sticks out to me is that what we're seeing in this neighborhood is similar to what we're seeing in other neighborhoods. I certainly have done my fair share of like gesturing and saying, slow down, to, you know, the young drivers in our neighborhood that. know, the young drivers in our neighborhood that tend to go fast. It doesn't seem to me that it is sustainable to have a lot of police officer time spent in one neighborhood, especially as the school year starts and we've seen that uptick. And I do want to serve as these residents. So what would you do if it was your neighborhood? What would you suggest?
Well, I think certainly having an open dialogue with the police department, as Mr. Weiss does have with me. We've met in my office before. He continues to communicate with me. But I think one of the complexities of this development in here is that there was such a lag time, years, between when Phase One was completed and when Phase Two started, that it's hard for folks to understand that this is temporary. And I don't want it to sound like I'm diminishing anyone's concerns within Huntington Woods, but this is temporary. I've seen many developments, subdivisions go up throughout my career, and this too, with the construction vehicles, will come to an end. But we're certainly not going to abandon them. I don't want to say we won't spend any of our time within the subdivision, but we will continue to monitor it and provide enforcement when we can.
Can, Mr. Campbell, can you remind me of the end, like the projected end date? How long? Because it's a good point. This is not going to be forever. As far as the constructions of Phase Two and Phase Three?
Right, so there's still a number of lots to be sold in the second phase. Meanwhile, there certainly are building a number of homes quickly, but then there's, of course, there's another, I think, 25 or so homes in Phase Three. So, you know, a few years, I don't know. I mean, that would be a better question for PULTY as far as what they're expecting, but, you know, maybe two to four, two to five years, maybe. I'm not sure.
Sure, sure. So Chief Hart, I think you've given us some really good things to think about. And, you know, may, at some point, if the homeowners association decides that these speed signs are so important, you know, is it possible for a private entity to use and operate these signs? Or is it only law enforcement that has access to that?
No, we've actually had several inquiries from different subs and condo groups to put them within their sub, that they would buy them and put them up. Our only issue would be is if we would allow them to be put on, you know, a city sign within the public right of way.
Mm-hmm.
So that would be a policy decision to kind of sit in. And those are questions and scenarios that we have actually started to discuss between the city manager, Mr. Fordice, and Gary Rubel and I.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay. I think those are all my questions for now.
Very good. Councilman McClellan, any questions?
Nope, just to thank you for, I actually did have one, I'm sorry. But thank you for your presentation, always very informative, and I appreciate the transparency on social media and stuff and kind of sharing the information with the public. My question was similar to the one that Ms. Mitchell just asked about the homeowners association. Is there any, has there been any discussion on asking PULTY to cover costs on something like that? Like if there was, if we needed private, if we thought we needed private, you know, two or three private signs to have PULTY pitch in? I mean, they're expensive, but they're, for a builder like PULTY, probably that's not a lot of money. And perhaps that would show some goodwill towards the neighborhood and the future of the neighborhood?
The short answer is no, there has not been any discussions. As Chief Hart just pointed out, we have, because of the requests that we've had from some other subs that they would be interested in purchasing them themselves and to obviously just be used in their subs, you know, that may also be a conversation between the homeowners association and the developer, too.
Just a thought.
To make that request, sure.
That was it for me. Thank you.
Just a couple of things. One of my concerns is PULTY and its general approach. I mean, we've had concerns with even just how they're handling their construction projects. At what point, and this may be something legal, do we consider them a nuisance as a result of what they're doing and not complying? I mean, we have that kind of issue with businesses at times where we have a lot of police response as a result of them improperly, you know, I mean, example, I can think of bars and situations like that. Is that potentially something? And that's why I asked the city manager, too, that we may potentially have enough of these type of calls and things that would cause us to be a concern in which we would basically start billing PULTY for the time and cost for you being sent out there.
Yeah.
Or shutting them down.
You know, it honestly just comes down, Councilmember Gierba, to our own personal accountability. And I think there's a problem inherently with, inside of me that to hold a builder accountable for a tradesperson. And let me also say this, because the homes have been well-established there, when I see construction vehicles in there, they're not always at the new homes that are being built. Some folks have had landscaping redone, they've had some work done in their home. So there's also sometimes where there's vehicles that might be associated with the new construction that maybe aren't working on those new homes. And it's a very difficult, you know, Celine police officers in August stopped 249 vehicles, issued 131 violations in August, but yet we still continue to see this poor behavior. It's like we're almost in this me-first, you know, generation of every, people are sacrificing, you know, their personal safety to get one car ahead of someone else. And I struggle with that every day, and how can we turn that tide and get people, because not every, it's not everyone else. I read the social media posts just like you folks do. I just don't have the time to sit down to respond to each one of them. That's why I started to share, you know, more and more data on our police Facebook page. But at some point, that, the fingers got to come back at some people, too, on what they're doing. And so I struggle with that.
Got it. Speaking of that, though, the information that we're collecting, the photos and the speeds, can that information be shared? If we had high violators, can that data be shared, or do we have a legal issue?
I would certainly want to speak with Mr. Sweat about that, but keep in mind, they're not the highest resolution, so as far as making out a driver, you could certainly make out a vehicle. I think there was one person on an ATV. So that would be a struggle to have at least a high-resolution picture. But there have been times where Mr. Weiss will send a picture of a license plate or a vehicle, or someone else in the sub will send one, and then we send an officer out to talk to that individual.
Yeah, because I know, unfortunately, I've seen that happen, too, and there's no front license plate, so you can't necessarily identify it that way because Michigan doesn't allow it. It was interesting, what I did was I'd been out there a couple of times, I'd taken a picture where there's a speed limit sign for the construction that says, "Construction vehicles 15 miles an hour." It's interesting how PULTY will require on their construction site to be 15, but they won't comply the rest of the street. So I can see where, that's my pushback on PULTY.
Sure.
Is that they're double standard. And then the last comment was, I know that we have the Monroe Street sign, we have the South Ann Arbor Street signs where we have flashing yellows, and I think we've talked about this before, but I would like to see those converted to speed signs since they're already wired electrically and everything. We don't have to worry about solar and batteries and everything to charge. Those would help at least in those two incidences of cars coming into town because from my perspective, that's where I see worse. People will slow down coming, I mean, they'll speed up coming down South Ann Arbor Street, but Monroe and the other ones, they're coming around those curves and they're just ready to fly right into town. And since we have that infrastructure there, the yellow lights may no longer serve the purpose that they would, that I think a strobe light would in terms of the signs, so.
And I think there's some cheaper solutions to that, too.
Yeah, and that's my thought, too.
Where we don't have to go out and mount them on signs. So I will certainly look at those for the upcoming budget.
And I, yeah, and I look forward to that because I think we have funds in our fund balance that we can identify for this need.
Thank you, Mr. Gierba. Mayor for Tipton.
Yes, thank you. Well, first of all, thank you for the report and all of the information. It's very helpful. Like Ms. Mitchell, I'd like to have maybe the PowerPoint to my desktop so that I can take also in a form that I can read easily. And also to be able to take some time to look at, for example, the speed sign data. One of the questions I have is, is the behavior, you referenced, there's bad driver behavior we're seeing more and more everywhere these days, is to get a sense of whether the behavior in Huntington Woods is approximately as bad as elsewhere in the city, or if it's particularly bad in Huntington Woods and, you know, that, you may have an impression about that. I'd like to be able to spend some time looking at speed sign data just to get my own sense of that.
Sure.
Do you have a comment on that?
Well, I just sent the PowerPoint to Ms. Royal and city manager accountable to be shared.
Okay, perfect.
And then on there, you will see on the chart that has all of the sign data.
Right.
Where there's a much higher percent of motorists who are obeying the 25 mile an hour speed limit within Huntington Woods than the overall collection of the data. So you can kind of go through and at least look to where the signs have been deployed in other areas of the city, and you can kind of come up with calculations as well, or I can go through and provide them for you.
Right, yeah, I think.
My personal observation is, and not, again, discounting Mr. Weiss's information and his observations, is it's a lot more sporadic in there than it is, let's say, on a Henry Street, or, you know, people turning left against the traffic control device out of Farisha or the Prius that passes me every morning on Moon Road as I'm doing 50, and they fly past me going up a hill. So I don't know how we got here as a society, but traffic safety is, it's a hot topic right now throughout the community. And really, I was in Florida for my niece's wedding in June, spent 36 hours down there, and I saw the exact same behavior. So I think people are making the case for autonomous vehicles for us, by their driving.
Yes, they can't come soon enough. Yes, so, thank you. I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Ms. Dillon, thank you.
Thank you. I guess I've got a couple of questions, one being that, I guess by your accord here, this has been going on for about seven months.
Yeah.
And they're at the breaking point. So, I mean, two to four years is a lifetime. I mean, that's, that's just asking a lot. I mean, it's not like, oh, we just have another, you know, 12 months to go. This is a huge amount of time. Something's going to have to be done. I've got concerns about the speed signs. If there's no legal ramification, I mean, are people just immune to them now in there?
I, in, within Huntington Woods, I mean, I'd have to ask Mr. Weiss what he and his residents think, but what I think's happening is that the drivers are, especially the construction vehicles, they're finding a way to not light it up. So as we've moved around the sub and have different solutions with the speed signs, now we're at the latest iteration, which is now when they're on their way to work, they're speeding, whereas before it used to, oops, I'm sorry, the major complaint was coming eastbound, getting off work. So the Fred Flintstone whistle goes off and everybody rushes for the exit point. That's kind of where we were seeing a lot of, you know, our speeding issues. When we look at the data now, those issues have slowed down dramatically. So now it's people coming in. That's why I say I can't win for losing because every time I put the sign somewhere within there, there's folks that are trying to defeat it.
I know, I know that you hit upon the topic of speed bumps in your presentation, but is there an opportunity to install temporary speed bumps? I mean, that's a really quick way to correct behavior. You hit that thing, whether you're in a truck or your minivan or whatever, you hit that thing going 40, you're going to feel it and you're going to know it and you're going to not do it again. And especially some of these vehicles that have trailers on the back, they're looking at damaging equipment and things like that, they start hitting those things. And at least give it an opportunity and see if that is any kind of a deterrent. I just feel like we need to look at other options at this point. We've kind of, if you're saying the stop sign is not really an option, the speed signs, I mean, by the data, it just seems like it's a non-issue, but we obviously know there is issues there. So I just feel like we're going to have to look at other avenues, or it's going to be a really long 24 to 48 months for these residents.
One question I haven't asked is, is the streets in Phase Two, have they been dedicated and turned over to the city yet or no?
No.
So it might be an opportunity for PULTY to step up and maybe put some temporary speed bumps or what have you, and maybe some composite material. But understand, if you put them on Arlington, you're going to have to put them on Huntington because then all of a sudden, the construction traffic, which I can do nothing about because there's no TCO on it. They're going to come in that north entrance. So they will find a way to get around it. And if you don't put them before and after Arlington, which you can't do on the city street, then they'll find a way to use Newcastle to get around as well.
Right.
So it's a very, like I say, when we do one thing, it almost.
No, I know. It's like water, it's finding another path.
It just kind of pushes the ball down the field, and it's a very challenging topic within the sub.
No, I understand that. But I just, I feel like something needs to be done, and as Ms. Mitchell stated, we can't continue to use an active police presence there, especially now that school's back. I'm traveling Michigan Avenue before 6:00 AM, and then again between 7:00 and 7:15, and the amount of traffic, the amount of distracted drivers and potential accidents and actual accidents that I have seen in the last week and a half is just astronomical. I just feel like we have got to have a better police presence out during those hours. And I'm not sure what it is and whether it means that the Huntington homeowners association needs to hire its own, or whether there needs to be some sort of intervention with PULTY and a little bit of strong-arming somehow in that they've got to adhere to the rules a little better and force that upon their contractors. I travel into Huntington Woods on a regular basis. Pretty much every time I get an email, I take a ride through and see. I've gotten passed by panel vans when I'm driving down the street as they're entering the construction zone. I've driven through the construction zone, and it wasn't a pleasant situation. So I can definitely understand the frustration of the homeowners in there.
I 100% agree with you on that. It's just trying to find a solution that's not pulling our resources away from other areas of the city where we have data where our accidents are occurring to try to have a big impact on that as well. It's a very tough topic to try to address, but I would also like to say that it's not just construction vehicles that are speeding either.
No, I, I.
It is the residents, and it might be people that are looking at homes. I was in there in a fully-marked police Tahoe a few weeks ago and was just doing maybe 15, 20 miles an hour down Newcastle, and somebody came pulling down out of their driveway rather quickly, and I'm like, "This person doesn't even see me." So I just stopped in the road and put my car in reverse and backed up a little bit, and person came right out of their driveway, backed up, took out, rolled around the stop sign at Newcastle, and I pulled him over on Huntington and had a discussion with him. And they never saw me. So it's, trust me, when PULTY's done with Phase Three, we're still going to be dealing with people speeding in there. They're going to be the people that live in Phase Three that are speeding past Phase Two and Phase One.
Right.
It's, it's just, it's very unfortunate.
No, it is. And like I said, I think that was where my suggestion of some sort of temporary speed bumps come into play, of something that's going to force people to slow down. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Understand how vexing these problems can be when they occur on your doorstep. I think the chief has made a case that, in fact, what's going on in Huntington is a microcosm of what occurs citywide. Back in the 80s when I was working in the Ann Arbor Police Department, one of the biggest nuts we tried to overcome was what we called resource allocation, where to put the people at what time of the day in what places. And this is another typical example of that. And chief, Godspeed to you and try to accomplish all of that with the. And Chief, Godspeed to you and try to accomplish all of that with the limited resources you have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. We will definitely continue this dialogue at a future meeting. In the meantime, if folks have questions, please direct them to the City Manager or Police Chief Hart. Thank you, Jared.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Bennet, you ready to get home? Let's try and now-
Our lions are losing, so I'm not missing much.
Why don't we fly through this? First, you've got a flyer regarding the November 6th ballot proposal, correct?
Yes.
And I don't mean to steal any of your thunder, but you and some of your colleagues on staff, along with council members, CEO and Tahar drafted this, correct?
Correct. So as you all are aware, the council did decide to do a charter amendment that will be going on the November 6th election, that has been accepted by the county, and to my knowledge, I believe, is on the county website. So therefore, we wanted to make sure that we got our information available, the facts, to our citizens as well. So this is my attempt, I am, have a, someone working on trying to make that vote November 6th on the left-hand side, a little bit more eye-grabby. But it first starts to talk about, you know, the proposed amendment language, so that they can get familiar with what's gonna be on the ballot, so it's no surprise to the voters on November 6th. And then as we scroll down the page, it briefly discusses, discusses local dollars for local streets, and it tells you, and demonstrates how much the proposed millage would generate, that would stay here in the city of Saline, and then also our Washtenaw County Road Millage, that they are also paying on their tax, and what that raises, and then also identifies that 80% of that comes back to our community, 20% goes into the parks, which we are eligible for, should we apply for a non-motorized pathway project. Then if we go over to the right, these are the facts that was presented to the City Council during our work meetings, that just basically say what our current street conditions are, saying that, then going down to what it costs, the estimated cost of street repairs and constructions, and then we go down and talk a little bit about what our current revenue. Now, these are all the numbers that we had at the time of budget when the decision was made to pursue this option. And then we also have the sources and the repairs for construction. And then, of course, most importantly, at the bottom, we have the cost to the voters, and the formula, so that the voter could find their tax bill, take their taxable value, and multiply it out to see what the impact would have on them. So it is my hope that we could get this, like I said, I kind of like to jazz it up a little bit, so it makes it a little bit more eye-grabby. We have water bills that would be going out the 1st of October, and I would like to be able to include this as an insert in the water bill. And then we also have the FYI that will have it, just a reminder for everyone to vote. And then I think we have some public meetings coming up to this effect, that I will have more of a slideshow presentation, so that we can have that, and if the council so wishes we could do that as a, you know, as a presentation at a later council meeting as well.
Yeah, why don't we do this? If you can swing it, did, I forget, Terry, did you, Clerk Royal, did you email to council the proposed dates for town halls?
Mm-hmm.
I did. Oh, you did, excuse me, okay. Can I see that much, yes, thank you very much.
Thursday's the first.
Okay, yep. And actually, to be clear, Thursday is my personal coffee hour with the residents of Brecken Village. Anybody is welcome to attend, but it won't be limited to just roads, although I will be messaging on it, messaging on our, our road proposal. The subsequent three are dedicated exclusively towards this ballot proposal. So, yes, so if you recall, I had several town halls, I think, back in 2016, 2017 on road funding, and I believe it was Mr. Fordice who did a PowerPoint. So I don't think we have to reinvent the wheel.
No, Jeff and I worked on it. So we're taking that, we're jazzing up the color on it, and just putting these facts in there.
Okay.
And I should have that available, you know, it's audit season, so whenever the auditors leave me alone.
Well, Mike, because our first town hall would be a week from tomorrow.
Oh, I will have it, yeah, I will have it planning by then. I have it pretty much done now, I just want to have some, my staff review it, check for accuracy in numbers.
Could you do this? Could you maybe send a copy of that, or have the City Manager send a copy of the revised PowerPoint to City Council sometime this week?
Sure.
And maybe you can show it at our next council meeting, which is Monday.
Sure.
The other thing that I need to do with you probably tomorrow is to get out a, tomorrow or Wednesday, get out a press release announcing these dates, send to all of our media contacts, including the Ann Arbor News, and then also get it up on, on Facebook and our website.
Yep, I was just waiting for the council to okay this document, and I would have staff ready to publish this tomorrow.
And I would strongly encourage if council members are able to attend each one of those, each one of those town hall meetings. So getting back to the brochure, because I would really like to be able to finalize this in, in a very near future, so we can at least have some copies available, City Hall, Rec Center, maybe some community gathering spaces are well. Are there revisions or changes that anybody would like to see? Ms. Mitchell, you want to start?
Under the sources for repairs and construction, you have a reference to operation and maintenance, but there's no explanation that in the section above, in that red, that, you know, you could put parentheses O slash M, so that people know, I mean, I just want to make it really accessible for folks.
That's good.
That's fine, thank you.
I guess I'm a little confused when I, I'm not like a super person for looking at a page of numbers. I'm having trouble understanding how the second set of numbers under that same section, sources for repairs, how that relates to the first set of numbers, but that, you know, that's just my brain, and I, I'm trying to figure out how to make that more accessible. So like, we have the, the line item, 173, 897, okay, there's that. And then the current Act 51 after operations-
So if you look up to the total current revenue, where it says, state weight, gas and tax, Act 51, so you take that $840,000 and you subtract that O and M-
Right.
Which is what I indicate, current Act 51 after O and M, that's the balance.
Right.
And then the proposed millage is from the other side.
Right.
So that would be where we, the revenues that we would generate.
All right. I mean, I, I understood that after a little, I'm just seeing it first glance.
Yep, no, and I want to make it as easy, you know, we want to make it as easy as we can for everyone to, to understand.
Right.
I just, also, I don't want it so cumbersome that they're, they just say, oh, I can't do it.
I would just say that if you just keep the wordage exactly the same, so instead of maybe, maybe even just taking out current, and just reformatting that a little bit, so that you have, like, maybe it says current on one column, and then, or-
Gotcha.
You know, and then have the sources on the other side, so they're right next to each other, so that people can visually see-
Or available.
You know, that they're right next to each other, that, oh, this is the, this is what it is now, this is what it would be, this is what it is now, this is what it would be, so they can see that solution coming out.
Like before and after?
Right, yeah.
I see.
Does that make sense, Mickey Joe?
I would have, I'll have to reformat this and document.
Just, you know, just having them-
Yeah, but now you're asking me to put those two columns side by side, as opposed to on top of each other, which means I have to reformat the document.
Sorry, I know. Like, for me, that's not a big deal, but like, the numbers part for me is a hard thing.
I get it. Ladies, anything else down there? You good?
No, I think that's-
You good? Mr. Gearbaugh?
Yeah, I looked at this before, and I'm sorry I hadn't gotten you my edits to it. My one concern is with the total current revenue, street budget, I would almost take that county millage line out of there, and just leave it down at the bottom section, so it doesn't look like you're double counting. It, it's gonna be confusing as we're looking at this, because they're gonna see you're taking $800,000, adding it in, and then subtracting it, and then you have it back down to the bottom. If you just show clearly what we have available for road millage, being $165,000, and at the bottom, you have the $3 amounts, that clearly tells them, these are the, what we have available, plus the millage amount, to get to our $900,000 or whatever.
So, so that I understand where it says total current, you want me just to, instead of saying state weight and gas tax, you just want me to put the $165,000?
No, 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 I would leave that there, but I would not add in the $178,000.
The $173,000 for the county millage?
I'm sorry, yep.
Then it won't tie to any of the budget revenues, and I was kind of trying to, but I can, I can do that.
Try and make it, don't worry about tying it as much as trying to clearly, we know you can tie it out, it's more the issue of what the reader's gonna see, and I, I look at that, I'm thinking, they're gonna not understand the mon-
Yeah, you're listing a million plus there for roads.
Right. So we want to just keep it clearly that we've got $840,000, we're always spending $600,000 of it, we can only use $165,000 towards new roads. So we're getting new money from the county, which we're identifying that, we have $165, and then we're gonna add on this new millage to get us up to our $773. I think you've got it pretty clear, it's just that-
I just, yeah, I get it. I was just hoping that we could, you guys are probably gonna want to see this again, so I'll get this done yet tonight, and then get it out to you, and I appreciate your comments sooner than later, so we can get it.
I would email it out this weekend, what I would ask from council is give her a yay, give her a thumbs up, so that she can then, if, once she gets, you know, consensus from the group, then we can begin to-
Well, I have to get it printed soon.
Right, 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 okay. I gotta, I'm working my way down, folks, I'm gonna catch everybody. Mr. Tahar, you're next.
Yes, so, for me, the link that might help in the current layout is the current available construction, $339,026, is actually the total of what's in the next section as current available county millage, 173, current Act 51, 150, Act 51 after operations, maintenance, 165. That's, that totals out to what's currently available for construction. So if it were clear that that is the source of the numbers below, it's what we have left over for repairs and constructions to add to the millage, all of the other shenanigans might not be necessary. That was clear to me, but I had inside information when I saw this the other day.
Interesting.
So, I don't know.
Well, I will, I'll, I'll draft it a couple different ways, I guess.
Just one way, it's easy, easy, easy.
That's what I'm trying to do, make it as easy as possible.
You keep taking notes, Ms. Bennet, we're gonna work our way down to the end of the day. Ms. Dillon?
I think it would be very helpful to show people pictures of what a fair road looks like versus a good to moderate road. I don't think people can, can understand that.
So those pictures and stuff like that will be in the PowerPoint? This is just a flyer that's going out in the mail?
No, that's fine, I'm just saying, for the presentations, I really think that a visual would be necessary. The other thing that I, I'm having a hard time making the connection to is that we, at the bottom, our bold number is the 773, 769, but up above, we're saying that we really need $900,000. So we have this gap there that we're sort of not identifying, it's sort of, and so, are we teasing people by saying you're gonna get a road that's a 6.5, when we actually can't fund that? And so you're actually gonna get, you know, a 6.1 or a 5.7? I mean, I'm not sure, because right now, we don't have dollars for it. Yeah, there could be future budget dollars, so I just want to be clear that what we're telling people they're getting.
I think we need to, I, I think it's worth articulating at the public forums that the three revenue sources at the bottom, which total the 773, don't include additional grant opportunities, or knock on wood, if a particular person were to be elected governor and deliver on some of her promises, and there was additional road funding, it, to make a long story short, it doesn't include any additional funding, it's limited to just those three.
And it's based on the 2018 taxable value, so there's, you know, no growth, no, you know, no cost, any of that. So this is based on current numbers as of today.
I think our messaging just needs to be clear when we have our forums.
And then I just have one other question regarding this, is that we only have one evening out of the four, there's only one evening session. We feel as though that's adequate for people that work, that there's only one opportunity, and it's at 6:00 PM?
Well, we gave them an opportunity, I mean, we can certainly schedule additional opera-
I mean, you have a 9:00 AM, a 10:00 AM, an 8:00 AM, and then one 6:00 PM. So anybody that works-
Again, we're getting a little confused. I'll be talking about-
Okay.
-road funding at Brecken Village, but that is a much broader, the focus is, is much broader. So we have three at the moment for infrastructure for the ballot proposal. We scheduled one to catch a few people before work, hence it's scheduled for 8:00 AM, and then one in the evening, and then one during the day. If we, I guess I would sort of play it by ear, if we feel a need subsequent to November or October 3rd to schedule an additional town hall, we still have ample time to do that.
Right, and I will also have, once the slideshow is approved, we'll have that on the website, along with this document, and then any questions. So we also talked about creating a frequently asked question, so if you're hearing frequently asked questions when you're talking about this, and we get it from the meetings, I'm gonna compile, we'll compile a list, and that information will also be available on the website, but I need that feedback, so that I can compile the information and get it out there.
Thank you.
Can the PowerPoint and stuff go on to social media as well?
Certainly.
Yep, links to it will, I mean, it'll go, yeah.
I think that would cover, I mean, I think if someone really is interested, they're gonna make a point to make it to one of those meetings, and then the rest of-
I agree, all that information-
People are gonna look at it in social media more than-
It'll be on our kiosk in City Hall, it'll be on the, it'll be in the FYI newsletter, this flyer will go out, and then we will, you know, promote voting and, as, as we can.
We can provide information, encourage them to vote, you can't tell them to vote yes.
That's why I said, and get them the facts.
Yep, very good. Mr. CEO, anything you'd like to add?
Well, one thing is, under services for repairs, construction, we need to, you have a misspelling there, current county mileage.
Oh, thank you.
Good catch.
Thought we changed all them. Thank you.
The other one is, so was I, did I hear correctly, you're gonna pull out county millage out of the revenue and street budget, are you gonna leave that the same?
No, we're gonna pull it out of there. So the way I have it currently, under current revenue, we're gonna have the state and weight gas tax Act 51 of the $840,000, and then in red, I'm gonna say less the operating cost, which would bring us to our current available construction of the 165. And then in the next section, I will copy the state and weight guess as totally up there, put that down here underneath, put the county millage, and then the proposed millage.
Very good. Thank you.
Those are the changes I've made.
Very good. All right, you'll email out a revised copy of this and the PowerPoint, and I'm asking council to provide feedback to mainly give a thumbs up, so that we can proceed then with-
I will mail this out yet tonight, so that we can get this at least to the printer.
Okay.
The PowerPoint I can do in-house, this I need to get printed.
Yep, okay. Let's trans, just transition then, do you want to speak very briefly about our Find Your Future in Saline event in October?
Absolutely. So the community recruitment retention team, which is made up of the city, the Saline Area Chamber, the Saline Main Street, and the school district, has heard a number of times when we're working with our local businesses, that they're having a hard time finding groups, so we are putting on a unique job fair. We have recruited some local businesses to also help us put this together. So on October 16th, from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, we are going to have, it's, it's a free event, and we're gonna have all of our community, so by community, we're also talking those businesses outside of the city limits that are in, within the school district, a job fair. We are still working on trying to get exactly how many businesses, we haven't identified the central hub, but at the central hub, job seekers will be able to come, get information for every business that's hiring in Saline, and then the school is providing shuttles for those businesses who would like to have them tour their facility, so that they can see. So we have flyers that will be going out, and we've titled it Find Your Future in Saline, it's a great place to live, work, and play.
So this is kind of a, I think I mentioned this in the past, it's not hyperbolic, it's kind of a job sphere on steroids, because I don't, I don't feel that a traditional job fair is particularly effective, where you have booths and tables and people come. I think the key to this is providing transportation, and providing people direct access, and the ability to view a business in a very hands-on and accessible manner, and so we've been very pleased with the response we've gotten, I think it's been overwhelming, candidly. And- And I'm hoping that this will be a success. But it will only be a success if we have a lot of community partners who are helping to promote this and get the word out, and get the word out well beyond Washtenaw County. We'll also be reaching out to contacts in Livingston, Lenawee, Monroe, and Wayne, because we know there are job seekers in adjacent municipalities who would love to work here, and it would be great for our businesses. So you will be hearing more, but thank you for the plug on that, Ms. Bennet. Okay? Thank you for your time. If there's nothing further to be brought up under the discussion portion of the agenda, we come to public comments. Under the open meetings, act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question to City Council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? Please note, oh, Matt, please.
Your Honor, may I please?
Please, absolutely.
Your Honor, members of the council, my name is Dietz LaFleur. I live at 814 Newcastle. I'm a member of Huntington Woods. The deck with the, Chief said, he talked about the construction period being temporary. My concern here is solely on the children on the corner of Newcastle and Arlington. Those, on that corner alone, approximately 10 houses. There are 13 children between the ages of five, excuse me, three and 15. The construction might be temporary, but those children's age of vulnerability is also temporary, and it happens to coincide with that construction. I'm simply asking for a stop sign or a temporary speed bump to be placed on both intersections. We're just, we're not asking for permanent relief here. We're looking for something temporary. We talked about children in a separate area of the city, and that seems to be the overriding concern with the residents, particularly in that concentrated area of the sub. I'm more than happy to meet with individuals with PULTY. In fact, my interactions with PULTY has been extraordinarily amicable. I have no complaints with the executives. As a member of Huntington Woods, I'd be more than happy to sit down with a face-to-face and explore the possibilities of investing money in a temporary solution like you proposed. I understand the chief's concerns with expenditures, with the speed limit sign. Measured up against the proposition of temporarily putting a stop sign there, the chief mentioned that there's problems with people rolling through it. That's exactly, practically speaking, the objective that I would, I would see achieved here, mitigating the speed. If they're just going to simply slow through and roll through the stop sign, problem has been solved. If you go and visit that intersection on Newcastle and Arlington, you'll see that the sidewalk dips substantially. On the other side, there's a driveway that also dips. I took my son out two weeks ago at about 6:30 in the morning on a Sunday, when there was no construction. Had him get on, he's five years old, had him get on his bike, put on his helmet. I had him ride down the sidewalk to see if he can engage both brakes, front and back, in handbrakes, to see at what point would this momentum stop him before going into the street. And it carried him a little bit in the street. In fact, Chief, maybe he was the one that got picked up going 50 or 60 on there. But it was, and if I may briefly conclude, that, of course, it isn't scientific, but as much as I might as a parent, talk to my five-year-old and eight-year-old, look both ways before crossing the street, there is not a day in the week where they see the neighbor's dog all excited to see the new collie or try to do everything in their power to brake before hitting that intersection. And their momentum, because of the grade of the sidewalk, will temporarily carry them in the street. I'm concerned that the next time I appear before you, it's going to be because of a severe injury or, I hate to say, a death of a kid because of the lack of mitigating speed. And if I can briefly ask for an update on the sidewalk? I think the city had talked about a timeline being the sidewalk, an umbilical connecting Huntington Woods to the, to the city being completed by winter. I didn't know if maybe someone could provide us, maybe not now, but on the next time we convene with an update on a proposed completion date. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Additional citizen comments?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Jeff Weiss from 365 Arlington. I'm sure most of you know me quite well. I do want to take a moment to thank everybody for their efforts. I know that you guys have been hearing us and working with us, and I've been in constant contact with Chief Hart and his police officers, who have been absolutely fantastic. I see them on a regular basis. I know Chief Hart is taking this quite seriously. And I do know that you on the council are as well, as was brought up before. This isn't really a short-term issue. This is really a two-to-four-year process. And I would like the City Council to consider, I know that there are the drawbacks to the stop sign and the speed bumps, but I don't know what the solution is. But what Dietz just said a moment ago is it's true. One day, something is going to happen. And the more that we do, the more effort that we put into potentially slowing them down or doing something to mitigate it, there is going to be a problem. Like Dietz said, the concentration of young kids is at that intersection. I think I counted a total of 14 kids in those six or seven houses on Arlington and Newcastle, and those are of the youngest kids. And no matter how often we tell them to look both ways and be careful, again, they are kids, and sometimes they get distracted, and they will run partially out into the street. In addition to being in constant communication with all of you, I have reached out to PULTY, their corporate offices, any contact number I can get, any email I can get, and I have gotten zero responses from them, which to me shows me that they don't care. The fact that they put up the 15 mile an hour speed sign, that was very nice. Nice little teeny-tiny little sign about yay big, that says, "Construction workers go 15 miles an hour." That was a nice gesture. That's like putting a Band-Aid on a broken bone. And I don't know what else they have done. I don't know what else Chief Hart can do with the resources he has. I know we've got a big city. I know we've got the construction, I mean, all the accidents on Michigan Avenue. So we're not the only people here. We're not the only sub with the issue. So what can we do with PULTY to start holding them more accountable in doing something? Whether they be responsible for speed radar signs, speed bumps in their, in the newer phase, or holding them more accountable and making them do something to resolve the problem? We have documented an inordinate amount of issues, photographs, license plates, email after email with as much documentation as I can get, even if it's only the first three letters and numbers of the license plate. So it is happening. It is happening on a regular basis. And the only thing that I can come to is what can we do to hold PULTY accountable? Two years ago, PULTY came to our Homeowners Association meeting when Phase 2 was still, was just approved and to talk to us about how they wanted to work with us, and they wanted to have a great relationship with us. And they're there to help build our sub and improve our home property values, and they will be there for whatever they need, and that has not been the case. So I ask that we can maybe go to PULTY and get some sort of results from them. But I do want to thank everybody for their time and efforts, and for those of you who have driven through. I think I've seen some of you some of the times and communicated. So I really do thank you for all the effort. I know you guys have a lot on your plate in long meetings. So thank you all, whatever we can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional citizen comments? Well, gentlemen, we appreciate your attendance this evening and sticking with us through a long meeting. Covered a lot of ground. And Mr. Weiss, I hope to meet with you sometime soon and maybe strategize approaches to constructively engage PULTY. As it relates, Mr. LaFleur, to your question regarding the construction of a connecting sidewalk, I did recently, probably two, three weeks ago now, forward all documents to your Homeowner Association President BT regarding the construction of the sidewalk. It is unlikely that that will occur this calendar year, but Mr. Shipman has provided documents that ensure that the construction is scheduled to begin in early spring of 2019. But if you'd like to see those documents, I'd be happy to share them with you and any other resident of Huntington Wood. But Huntington Woods, excuse me, but this city remains committed to working with him to expedite completion of that project. And as you know, we're also contributing financially, because we think it's important to your neighbors and your future neighbors in Huntington Woods Phase 2 and 3. But again, gentlemen, thank you for being with us. Please note upcoming meetings, we have no absences, so the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn at 10:09 PM.
So moved.
Moved by Girba, seconded by Dillon. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. This meeting is adjourned.